Right here. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in visible liberty and justice. Let's pause for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. Can you hear me in the back? For the sake of our students, we do want to hear from our citizens, and there is time for public comment. Prior to action items on the agenda, we ask speakers identify themselves and your district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes if possible in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and length. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time is elapsing. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. This evening's agenda needs to be modified. We need to add after 2.5. So I don't know what to call it, 2.5B, I don't know what to call it. So 2.5.1, how about that? Which will be a report from the school board liaison, which is a student. And we also need to add item 8.2 under action items, which is an action item regarding masks. If we need that, if we need that item, it needs to be on the agenda. So I have those two changes to what is printed in, was provided to us. Are there any others? All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as modified?
A move.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second? Second from Ms. Bynum, all in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no. And we have an agenda. Donations? No donations. That's strange. You know what? Since 2000, I can't remember a time when we never had any donations. Isn't that funny? Wow, all right. Is there a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from July 13th, our regular July meeting? We have a motion from Mr. Uben, is there a second? Second from Mr. Grove, is there any comments? All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no. And so ordered, Mr. Grove, had you had opportunity to review the bills?
I have, and we're at the beginning of the year, so we're in good shape.
We're looking pretty good, right, first month? All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? The consent agenda contains approval of donations, a warrant, which means pays the bills, attendance report and home school report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
One moment, Mr. Mills, did you want to, our student liaison-
Oh, I skipped over the thing I added. Thank you so much. Where is our school liaison? Hey, I'm so sorry, Cassie. Cassie, would you come and speak to us? I jumped right over you after I added you, so sorry.
You're all good.
So sorry.
No, you're good. Good evening, everybody. As you all know, school is starting tomorrow. And for the most part, I feel like our student body is very excited about that, especially with the prospect of this being a more normal year than last year. Our, our sports have just started recently. All the, all the fall sports have been starting having practices. And I believe golf had their first match today sometime at like round four or whatever. So that, that's boosting morale already because sports are on time. And then I think that's just a very good sign for the future. And then yesterday, we had the meet the teacher day. And that had a few bumps in the beginning, but eventually everything was able to be worked out. Our students were able to fix and revise any scheduling issues that they may have had. They were able to meet their teachers and ask questions, especially with how many new teachers we have. Nobody's had them before, so they were able to ask their questions and get to learn kind of like their teaching styles. And they had, they were able to explain lots to everybody. And then people were able to see their friends since the end of last school year. And they were able to see their friends' faces, which was great. I personally got to walk around with my friend and with my sister and got to meet the teachers that I didn't have, but they did. And while I didn't get to the opportunity to meet every single new staff member we have, I did get to meet a few. And they seemed very enthusiastic about teaching us, and they had a lot of interesting ideas that we haven't had in Rappahannock before, so I think they're going to be a wonderful fit. And they're gonna bring in a lot of new blood and new ideas and teach us in different ways that we didn't think about earlier. And then I have high hopes for this being a new and safe school year, filled with engaging learning, pride activities, school spirit, and much more. Thank you.
Hey, Cassie, do those new teachers know that you're gonna come rat out on them? When, because you'll probably share stuff, right? It's a secret?
They don't know yet.
Yeah, I appreciate you, I appreciate your reports, by the way, they're extraordinary. And they really do well at connecting us with the student body, and I appreciate, because they're unique. Every time, I never know what you're gonna do, so I appreciate it. Well done.
Thank you.
Anybody questions from Cassie? Cassie, again, everybody. Sorry, I skipped you. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda now? We have a motion from Mr. Uben, is there a second? Second from Ms. Bynum, all in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no. And so ordered, Dr. Grimsley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. My first report tonight is just to go over and give an overview of the back to school events and everything that's been going on the past couple of weeks. There has been quite a bit. So we started out with our new teacher orientation, August 2nd and 3rd. And as you can see, we had 18 new faces, some not so new, that just moved roles. But out of all of those, a lot of that was through retirements and people who had left our district. So really only two additional positions, which are the transition teachers we'll talk about later with the ESER planning, ESER funds from the American Rescue Plan. So awesome group. If you've read their resumes and bios in the, in the paper and on our Instagram and Facebook pages, you'll know that this is just pretty incredible for Rappahannock to have attracted so many very stellar, high qualified applicants. So we're thrilled. New teacher orientation, it was baptism by fire, lots of stuff to go over with everybody in two days' time. So of course, all that fun, hiring, financial paperwork, time with the principals and acclimating to the school community. Headwaters provided a lovely lunch for our new teachers and also for our entire staff today. So thank you, Headwaters, that was awesome. Technology and Power School webpages, academic expectations, unpacking the embedded assessment and frameworks and curriculum, special ed, Alice, oh my goodness, it was a lot. And they've worked really, really hard to get ready. So we're thrilled with our new staff. They handled it so well, kept a smile on their face. They're very enthusiastic to start tomorrow. We had convocation on August 4th, and as you can see, our teachers there are superheroes. We really did a lot along those vein, that vein, that our teachers really are superheroes and provided so much last year and will continue to do for our students. Especially everything that is going on in the world right now. Our teachers are the safe place. That's where students find solace, that's where they find comfort. And as we said in that, if you know Teacher Pedagogy, you have to Maslow before you can bloom. So that's your Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You need to be fed, you need to feel safe. You need not to be so anxious before any learning, your Bloom's higher level learning can take place. So that's what we try to emphasize. Dr. Adam Starks came to speak to us. If you know Dr. Adam Starks, he was a former graduate of Rappahannock, product of the foster care system. And his story of resilience is one that's just incredible. So he shared that with the staff, and the staff just loved him. And he stayed on with us the entire day and had lunch with us and got to really talk one-on-one with the teachers. And he just had a great time. And also, all staff members got a gratis copy of his book, Broken Child, Mended Man. And all of you have one as well, and that's a book that a lot of the teachers could not wait to read. And it really just talks, it's just such a great story of resilience and overcoming trauma and, you know, not letting that get you down. And also, how important one person in your life, when you're experiencing trauma, can really be. So that's awesome, and we emphasize that with our staff. Here's just some exciting pictures, our high school administrative team, very excited to welcome people back. Professional development took place over August 4th through 10th. Some of it's not quite done. We give some staff the ability to do some online professional development throughout the month of August. So those are like Alice's training modules, Title IX training, there's some mandatory reporter training, culturally responsive teaching, the new talent ed platform we're using online for evaluation and updating your professional development points. It's really exciting because that's been quite the process and very antiquated, the way we've been kind of doing that. So now, teachers can log in and see it all, and they can download a certificate if they lost it. Or usually, they just call me, "Do you have the one I did?" Let me check. So this is much better. I'm very happy about this. And then we had some onsite professional development, of course, Dr. Adam Starks counts as PD also. Principals had different meetings and trainings going on. There was a gradebook training. Commit to be Fit did some training on movement in the classroom, STEAM and math training at the elementary, and then there was some specialized assessment training. VKRP is an assessment we use for kindergarten readiness. And DRA is a new reading assessment we're using, and it goes all the way through 12th grade. So with the learning loss and unfinished learning that we're going to have to deal with this year, it was very, very important that we had specialized assessments to become master diagnosticians of exactly where the learning is. And we can't address that unless we know. So having the best assessments we can to pinpoint that was really important. Eighth grade orientation last night, lots of fun. The eighth graders were just so excited to come in and see, I know, I have one, so this is really difficult for me. My oldest is an eighth grader now, so, but anyway, seeing their lockers, that was like the most exciting thing, playing with the lockers. It was so cute to watch them, and they're just so excited and seeing the big school. And this is some graduates that came back to meet with Ms. Pond and Mr. Seward, and they were willing to help talk to the eighth graders too, and they were just so thrilled. And I know, my daughter for one, is just so excited that they get peer mentors who are juniors or seniors to help guide them through their eighth grade year, because it is scary. You're coming up from being the big dog at the elementary school as a big seventh grader, and then you come and you're the little dog in high school. So they were, they were very excited and thrilled. Meet the Teacher Day was also yesterday. So as you can see, people were just so excited, the kids, and that's my little son too. I use him, my kids a lot. So they were very excited to see their friends, some of which they haven't seen in 16 months. Okay, so some stayed virtual and are coming back. So just, it was so great to see all their faces, and the teachers were so excited, so lots going on. Meet the Teacher was very successful. And we also had lots of communications going out for back to school because as you could tell, things change so quickly, and there's always new information coming at us, and we want you to know as soon as possible. So Holly Jenkins is the master of like getting all these ideas, I throw at her like every day, into a really pretty format to send to you that you can understand it. So thank you, Holly, wherever you are, appreciate it. So that's what went on to get ready for tomorrow. So tomorrow, of course, is the first day of school. We are ready, our teachers are ready, HVAC is ready. So we did have a new VRF system being put in. As with everything else in the world, materials and stuff take a little longer to get. And we have a very short time period when we can order and use this fiscal year's money. So that makes it really difficult for making, you know, sure. But I am assured it is all set for tomorrow. But if not, we have a backup plan, and we have Singleton units, air purifiers and conditioners in each room just to make sure as a backup, in those rooms where the VRF system was being installed. That's not the whole school, but just a few. So that's all good. That's my back to school update.
That's exciting.
It's exciting. We are ready. We're excited. Thank you. Our next update is on the Student Code of Conduct. There were some updates to that, so I'm going to ask Dr. Carol Johnson to come to the podium to go over those changes with us.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you too. Just wanted to give you a quick overview of the updates to the Student Code of Conduct. The, the goal is for this document to be positive in dealing with discipline, preventative, and offering alternatives to excluding students from the school program. So I promise not to belabor this. I, this is like one of my children that I work on frequently, and so I'm very attached to it. But when thinking about student discipline, there's, there's a statement that I just love. And it says that students cannot be expected to intuit appropriate behavior. Therefore, adults in the school are responsible for teaching and providing feedback to reinforce appropriate behavior and correct inappropriate behavior. So we, we have a Student Code of Conduct to kind of set the parameters, to kind of give everybody, you know, an idea of how to keep order in a school division. But ultimately, as educators, one of our primary roles is to help to teach our students those behaviors that are appropriate in the school division. And so we try to send that message through our Student Code of Conduct. So as far as updates this year, there really weren't a whole lot. We're required every two years to do a formal update to the Student Code of Conduct, so this would be that biennial year. However, we do, you know, go through each summer to be sure that we're aligned with VDOE model guidance and also our school board policy. For this year, the major changes on pages five and six, there was a Virginia Code requirement that was added to those two pages because it was stated in our school board policy that it would be there. So we added those to pages five and six. On page 14, there was also a revision to the-
So Carol, which, which pieces on pages five and six are you referring to that were new? I, I just didn't notice anything when I scanned it before.
Yes, on pages five and six, the notice of requirements of the Virginia Code, parental responsibility and involvement requirements. Our policy says that we will give that code to parents. So it's included in the Student Code of Conduct. On page number 14, we did update the section on removal of students from the classroom to align with updated school board policy. On page 15, at the very bottom, there is a sentence that is added in there in regard to self-defense that is required, that says that when a student acted in, acted in self-defense, or whether they did, is going to be considered when the student's conduct is evaluated for disciplinary action. Then on page 16, the alcohol, tobacco and drug section was revised just to help it to read more clearly. There's a lot of information in there, and we just wanted it to, you know, just kind of streamline it a little bit more. And overall, those are pretty much the updates that we made to it. So are there any questions on the revised Student Code of Conduct?
Do I have any questions? This is managed as a, the way we manage, so we have policy and then we have rig- what do they call it?
Regulations.
Regulations. This is managed more like a regulation, right? It doesn't require our adoption. We adopted the policies, the regulations drawn from those. So thanks for those updates.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Item 4.3 is the Crisis Management Plan Review. Every year annually, I need the school board just to look at that document. That's not something we can release publicly, but we do have to. There's a lot of data entry we have to do with the Department of Justice around this program. So there's a lot of different pieces, safety audits and meetings and the Crisis Management Planning Team, and lots of different pieces. So this is one of the required, that you look at it, and you can let me know if there's any concerns you have offsite. Then you can just email those to me, and I can bring them to the Crisis Management Team. All that I really need to do with the department is to say that you've had that opportunity, and it has to be recorded in the minutes, and then I have to upload that document to that, that site.
Right. And the reason this is not public is obviously if it was open, then our vulnerabilities could be analyzed, and we have a brand new crisis to manage, right?
Yeah, no more of those, please.
So the board is reviewing the document as required. And if we have any feedback, we just email you ideas. Is that clear?
Okay. 4.4, Comprehensive Planning. So this is the year that we get to go through the comprehensive planning process, which is actually pretty timely because so much has changed and shifted since we've had to deal with the last 16 months, right? So there's a lot of goals that we may, or objectives that may shift a little based on new data. So of course, planning process, dream design, develop, I really like that process. The admin team met in Leadership Academy, which I reported on last month. And a lot of that was delving into our areas of the comprehensive plan that we still thought it was very relevant to continue with profile of a graduate. It does direct as a conceptual framework, a lot of what we do. We still believe in the life readiness goal to prepare students for anything that life waits for. So enlistment, enrollment, and employment, right? So the three Es, I like how Mr. Seward says that all the time, and that's life ready. So content knowledge, career planning, workplace skills, financial planning and fiscal sustainability. It was brought up in different meetings that that was a piece that people felt that the comprehensive plan of the schools didn't have enough of that part. We do a lot of planning that's outside of it, but they like to see that inside. So that came from different meetings, but also the leadership team noted that important fact. So that's a new category in the comprehensive plan. School community well-being, recruitment, retention, and student community engagement and civic responsibility. So those are the broad categories derived from the conceptual framework that we'll be looking to tackle in the comprehensive plan. Also, equity and social emotional learning lenses should be applied to the entire plan. We didn't think that needed, it's a standalone goal because it should be embedded in everything that we do. So those lenses should be looked at as we're looking at the objective for content knowledge. Do all our students have equitable access to the curriculum in a way that makes sense? Career workplace skills, do all our students have the same ability to succeed in workplace development and career credentialing? You know, so those, those lenses are really important too. Do our students have the well-being to be able to access those programs? Because like we said before, the Maslow versus the hierarchy of needs with Bloom's. So do, are those taken care of in a way that provides equitable access? So it's really all about accessibility. When you talk about equity, it's about access. Does everyone have the same access to achieve at the same level so that there's no predictability from background on what the outcome will be? And that's as simple as, the simplest definition, I think, of equity that we all kind of agree on. So we will need people to participate in this. This is a big process. In those different categories, I've listed here, content knowledge, if you're, if you want to participate in that. Crystal Smith or Jen Wissinger are our leaders on that team. Career prep and workplace skills, Mr. Seward has brought that on. And not only is he high school principal, he's also a career and tech director. So that makes a lot of sense for him to lead that one. Financial planning, myself and Stacy Witt will be leading that team. Student community engagement, that'll be Courtney Atkins and Holly Jenkins. Recruitment and retention, Robin Bolt and Michelle Berta. And school community well-being is Dr. Carol Johnson. So we have the leaders in place, but we will need stakeholders, parents, students, community members who want to participate with us. We have a lot of work to do to look at our previous plan and updates, which we've updated you every odd year as required by code on the progress of those. So we will review that data and also come up with new objectives that make more sense based on the changes and new data that we have. This document's not working, but that's okay. That's a previous one, and we did load that for you, I believe.
It's an extensive document.
It is, and maybe it's just-
And it's good for five years.
Five years, yes. So this is the year, by November, we'll have to present to you a new comprehensive plan for adoption for the following year will take place. So there's still some time in there if we need to make changes, but that's when I first have to present it to you.
Right. And, and so it's good to know, if you, if you're interested in helping these teams out, any category that you want to contribute in, it's good to know that you're committing to a team that's gonna, that has a goal that's gonna end before Christmas, right? It's not a forever commitment that you're making. It's got a particular goal, and it's got a timeline, and so that might help people say, "Yeah, I'll, I'll put two months into that." And it's gonna be, you know, a meeting here and a meeting there, and probably some exchanges of comms and that kind of thing. So it really, I remember taking part in this, you know, 15 years ago, and it was a library full of people. And each one, each group of four took a topic area and started to create the documents. You remember this meeting, Carol? I'm pretty sure you were there with me. And, but it would be much better if people that desired and had a certain expertise wanted to contribute in a specific area. So if you feel led that way, then please reach out to these POCs and, and, you know, volunteer for your school, short-term project.
Yes.
And a goal that will be part of what we are for five years. School board members included, we can participate. We can. I was, I was on one of them, however many years ago that was, 10 or 15. So yeah, we can participate, not more than, not more than two of us. Right? Because there'll be an explosion or something if more than two of us show up. So anyway, I encourage the public to become involved in this because it's something that has lasting value with us. And when we do our budget, one of the things we do, and do our budgets, is make sure it's aligned with the comprehensive plan. And so you gotta know, whatever the priorities are that you're helping develop, if it's the, the academic, the ag school and the things it's going to pursue, or whatever those things are, you gotta know that the budget's gonna follow the plan, right? So this is the key document that drives, and we have to make sure we're aligned to. All right? Thank you.
All right, item 4.5 is the ESER III funds. I have an action item on the agenda tonight because I will need approval to send that on to the state. I will say that this application can be amended as needed at any time, but they just have an initial application date of September 1st. So this is the board meeting before.
For the benefit of everybody else, could you explain ESSER?
Okay, so that is the Elementary Secondary Support Emergency Relief Funds developed by the American Rescue Plan.
There you go.
I think I got that right. So that, we were very pleased to know that in ESER III, that we are going to be receiving 1.1 million dollars to help with COVID impact, which is wonderful. ESER II that we received in this fiscal year, we budgeted for this fiscal year, was $500,000. So we do have quite a bit of funds to really hone in on those impacts developed by COVID so we can ameliorate those issues, and that was the whole goal of a lot of this. So ESER III carried with it, it's such a large amount, a lot of different pieces to it, and partly, well, I'll get to that in a second. So it's a, yes, American Rescue Plan, oh, it was on the next page, Mr. Grove, I could've just did that. Elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, okay, I was pretty close. So these awards were announced, again, 1.1 million. We must use at least 20% to address learning loss. So that's depicted in the application as we go through. There are different considerations for allowability in those funds and what is permissible for use. So a lot of it is responding to COVID pandemic, a lot about the learning loss, salaries for additional teachers or specialists required, needed for those areas. There's different things about mitigation practices, PPE, sanitization, air quality. So all of those are permissible. So part of the requirements is that we send a survey to stakeholders. Mostly, parents responded, the big yellow piece of the pie. The red was students, so very small, Cassia, we're gonna need your help to get more students' feedback on these things. Teachers was in the purple, the blue is staff, and then green, community members. So that's who responded. And they, the top five priorities on that survey were pretty split, I mean, really, a difference of like 1%. So the top five, addressing learning loss was the top. Improving technology and internet was interesting, it's number two. HVAC air quality, number three. School leader resources was number four. And that, that was a, in the survey, if I recall, there was a lot more in that about providing resources as school leaders see in their own buildings, you know, depending on what that. So there's more language in that than just school leaders. But school facility repairs and upgrades was number five. And all of those were so close, as you can see in the pie, they were pretty evenly split. So our application, and also part of that was not just surveying, we had other discussions and administrative teams, and also discussions in SIFT and looking at financial challenges. And also um, discussions in SIFT and looking at financial challenges, um, how we're going to tackle some of that. Um, we also asked a couple of questions in the survey. Um, the library has been on the radar at the high school to modernize and update um, for a while. So we asked folks, do you think that's a good use of some of these funds? We're going to put about a hundred and fifty thousand out of that one point one million into updating that library, making it more modern for high schoolers. Um, and also we were hopeful to add an outdoor area when you go out. Um, and asking Raplo to generously help us again with that, that project, um, to having an outdoor area similar to what the um. Elementary school has with the steam lab and then the courtyard area. Um, so that's something we're looking into and also adding different space for um, uh, students to work independently. And of course, more technology in the library. So uh, people were pretty excited about that, eighty-seven percent of respondents said, yes, that sounds good. Broadband internet connectivity, we asked the question. It could be permissible that S R three funds could be used in part to help with internet connectivity in the home of. Families with school-aged children. So that was a question and ninety-three percent said, yes, please, let's do that. Um, so we tried to incorporate all of this into the S R three plan that we would like to submit. Um, so here's by category where the funds are. Um, a lot addressing learning loss. Um, and these funds can be stretched over three years, okay? So that's why the numbers look high, but remember, we're trying to plan out and stretch it for, well, until September of twenty twenty-six. Um, so twenty twenty-four, sorry, the county gets till twenty twenty-six. We're trying to um, plead with the state to allow us to do the same as the county and go for twenty twenty-six to stretch them a little bit further if we could. Um, so personnel, we added um, the transition teachers and specialist funds, additional custodial hours. Personnel, also substitute costs for any COVID-related expenses, um, things like that go into personnel cat- category. And then FICA and benefits go along with that. And the contracted services number are for any um, services uh, related to subscriptions for, let's say. Online curriculum and um, different programs we use. Virtual Virginia was a big expense this year for those who um, wanted to take it. And also for um, remote learning support too. Um, over the next few years, we anticipate still being able to tie into the state contract. Um, also, we set aside funding for potential broadband telecom infrastructure contracts. Um, so that money is in there too, in three thousand, but also in eight thousand capital outlay, we can put some in there too. Um, so we have set aside, but we don't really know what the cost is as the county still grapples with that. Um, so when they do have a better understanding of what costs are associated, we can hone in on um, the families. Which we do have G I S mapping of where those families are and what their internet connectivity looks like. Which then permits us to use S R three funds to meet that need, so very exciting. We just don't know how much and what, um, so this can be amended at any time. And the funds also do have to be appropriated during our reg- regular budget um, development process like normal, so. Okay, any questions?
Great to have a windfall like this, actually, we can really use it.
Yes, we can, I'm very excited.
Up and beyond our current budget. Um, is it, is it two-year money?
Uh, twenty twenty-four, September, it has to be encumbered by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And it's a reimbursement process, so.
Right. So what's gonna happen is, uh, as we need it, it'll be appropriated to us through our board supervisors, right? Uh, on an as-needed or as-used basis and, and uh. And our, actually, our bottom line of our budget will end up looking inflated because of this. By whatever portion we use each year.
Correct.
Right. We need to be able to track that, obviously. Separate uh.
Yes.
Separate items.
And depending upon, like I said, with the, the county, let's say the county decides, we want to do this broadband expansion product, uh, project. So, but we need this much more funding, where can we leverage all the resources? And the schools have access to even more than S R three in different areas. So working together becomes really, really important to maximize this, this um, potential.
So we can supplement.
If that were to happen, we would have to go in with a supplemental appropriation request.
Right.
For this purpose, uh, if it were, were in this fiscal year, yeah.
Is there any way to, to control this like a C I P program would be?
Apple Improvement Plan?
Yeah.
It depends, so um, under capital.
That's a separate budget item, a separate set of books.
It could, I mean, either way, they, it would have to transfer to us for expenditures so that we can reimburse through the Omega site on the D O E site. So we have to be in that process, so either, however they want to put it in the budget. But when we budget with them, um, they'll, they'll plug it in that way usually. So for F Y twenty-three is probably where the bulk of this is gonna land. And then if we don't use it, then it would be listed as a supplemental carryover for the F Y twenty-four. Because we still have in F Y twenty-two, our five hundred thousand in S R two funds that we're gonna use first, which has to be used first.
But it would be separated from our normal regular budget from some.
It's incorporated. You'll, you'll see it in, um, like in our current budget, you'll see S R two called out there with expenditures. So you'll see a revenue for the S R two new monies versus um, offset by the expenditures. So it'll be, work the very same way, we just haven't had that supplement because we didn't know what the number was gonna be when we developed our F Y twenty-two budget.
It'll, it'll work that way, I'm just making clear so that people that track things like that will know that this money is not in perpetuity. It's not money that we're building into our budget so that it will be there forever. We know that, and that's why I want to track it separately, because what'll happen is, you know, someone will do the calculation and say, oh, the cost per student. To increase by such, 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 well, that's why we're keeping track of it, right? This is a special scenario and so we're gonna make sure we keep, keep it in a separate pot.
That's exactly what, that's what I was trying to get at.
Codes, yeah, Stacy and um, Stacy Witt and our treasurer have done a great job working out a system that calls that out. So we can pull a report and, and get those through, so that really, really helps. So we have different COVID-specific codes in the budget in our systems, so.
Any other questions? Ask for questions? Nope. Thank you.
Alright, so the R C P S well-check, this is going to replace the item that used to be our standing agenda item last year called reopening. Well, we're not reopening, we've been reopened for quite a while, all last year, so we decided to call it a well-check. Let's check up, how are things going and what's the data look like now? And so let me pull this up. Alright, so our well-check, so this will continue until I'm told otherwise to use our. Dynamic data-driven decision-making process, using the data to change what we're doing and respond appropriately. We use the data dashboard from V D H and also the school metrics and C D C to pull all of our indicators that we developed last year. So those are the sources, we don't use anything else, so C D C is V D H data, um, that we pull for that, that metric. Um, so as you can see, our ninety-day trend is here on the graph. We have one day last week where there was a four day, uh, four case count in one single day. So that popped you up a little bit, um, on your seven-day average number per hundred thousand. But our seven-day average number at this point is still one, um, according to V D H. So what does that look like when we go to our tier indicators? Um, we're still in the green, your percent positive rate bumped up to the yellow with nine point five percent. And for some reason, the V D H dashboard took down change in cases occupied hospital beds, but they still have occupied beds with COVID. Which is zero at this point. So maybe a new data point, if they don't put those indicators back on there, um, would be your seven-day case average. Which a lot of the schools are using that have different systems, um, usually a one percent change in your seven-day rate. Triggers a new layered mitigation response, which I think is a really good data point. So it's a one percent change in case, so maybe that's our new one we'll put, and V D H may actually update it to say something like that, I'm not sure. Um, but that one seems to be a good indicator and that one's available.
That one, so we would add that one?
We could, if we.
And that's one that we're tracking locally anyway. Right, so we know we'll have accurate data on that immediately.
Absolutely, yep. So that could be it, so, so far, data still locally in our area looks good. But we have seen cases rising around us and in Virginia and, and in the immediate areas around us, so it's important too. Um, the data, uh, community buy-in on the mask policy, that's there for you again, that's just so we know. Um, we don't usually make decisions based on perceived needs, like I said before, with just surveys, this is what the most people want. But what that tells you when you make a policy change is what you can expect about cooperation and compliance. Because most effective policy needs to have the highest number of um, people compliant and understanding it and willing to comply with it. Otherwise, you have some pretty um, hefty issues with enforcement. Vaccination data really hasn't changed much, twenty-two percent. Um, and this is just a picture of it, I know it's hard to see, but that's all on V D H, you can pull that uh, yourself to double-check this. But um, and it hasn't changed with our lo- local staff, but sixty percent of our staff requested vaccination appointments initially. We assume it's gone up since then. Um, one note about vaccination, we hear through the grapevine of trusted sources. That um, the twelve and under vaccine may be available as soon as September. Um, so that's interesting too, so that's something to know. The last meeting, school board gave consensus to continue using this metric. Um, with data-driven decision-making matrix for layering on additional mitigation as data indicated, including masks. But to continue to strongly encourage it, um, for unvaccinated individuals but not required. Um, so what's changed and why is this being brought up again as a big issue? Well, the day after our meeting, Governor Northam decided to get up and uh, say that the interpretation that we have had followed since March. Was completely wrong, even though the state said it was right in V D H and V D O E. So yes, a little frustrating, um, but he said that um, there may be litigation implications. For schools that do not mask, uh, mandate a mask. Um, so that kind of sent us all for a loop, superintendents all across. And you, you've seen school board meetings popping up all over the place, I'm sure, deciding how to grapple with this. Um, and what he's talking about is this uh, Senate Bill thirteen oh three. Um, which says, which is such a convoluted, poorly-written, loosely-interpreted bill, and this is the issue with it. Kinda wish I was teaching my school law class right now because they would have a great topic to write about, um, but I'm not. Um, but school board, school boards must provide in-person instruction and follow C D C mitigation to the extent practicable. So to the extent practicable, those of us applying this law, you know, considered it to giving local autonomy. And that's what we were led to believe the entire time from every agency. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry to everybody that the school board members and superintendents and everybody were, were put in this precarious situation. It's created a lot of divisiveness and, and antagonistic t- um, discourse that didn't need to happen. In March, we could've just said, if it was supposed to be interpreted that way, the governor could've issued an edict that said, C D C is the law in Virginia. The only C D C law we have at this point is the order for buses, that is the law. But this created a new uh, frame and lens to look through. Uh, so that's what we need to talk about now. I feel like the school board has really already given consensus on the, the health and data and the.
Twice.
Point.
Twice.
Twice, so now what has changed is the legal implications that should be talked about. Um, so here's what, and we have consulted with our, our school board attorney on this. So the, the short answer is, I wish I could give you like the best, safest way to avoid litigation in this. But any which way you go, I mean, it, it's gonna get litigated across the state because it is so vaguely written. Um, and that's just the way these things work, sometimes you need the judiciary to decide, so you have legal precedent to then base decisions on, um, in law. So you have access to learning as a big issue either way, okay? So who are we disbarring from in-person instruction? You know, those who mask, those who don't, what does the enforcement look like, what implications happen there, your funding, okay? So you worry about if you're, if you're considered by a judge to be grossly negligent, what does that look like? Do you have insurance, are there legal fees? Your A D M can be impacted by these policy decisions, unfortunately, since it's become so political. We could see a mass exodus of students either way, you know? So this has created just a horrible situation for localities, I'm really sorry. I just, I, I have let Richmond know my feelings on this very strongly, that they have put us in an awful position. And it was their own advice this whole time. And if we had known that that should've been the edict from the beginning, it would've saved thousands of hours of my time and my staff's time. Developing a system that is proven effective, when really it was a, it was moot point, even at everything at V D H anyway, so frustrated.
I, I know too, it was, it's not just a letter from you, I'm sure other superintendents across the state are also complaining on, I like banner, right?
Yeah, yeah, we are, and it's just, it, it completely diminished the locality's autonomy and responsibility. And the trust we had with our community that knew and learned this system. So when we said, alright folks, we're seeing this rate happening, we're layering this on, adding a new automatic ten-day quarantine. If you have these symptoms and we're gonna mask these grade levels for the next two weeks, everyone would've complied with that, they understand. And they've walked through this, they helped us develop this program. You know, so that, that part is really difficult because now it's created mistrust and, um, you know, just uncertainty in, in the system. So I, I apologize for that. Um, so to the extent practicable, what does that mean to the board? And that's what you all will have to decide, to the extent practicable. Is it practicable, practicable if it causes a lot of unrest and compliance issues, enforcement issues, ethical dilemmas? Is it more practicable, it's, I wish I had better, is it the?
One, one thing that I, I would like to, I would've loved to have seen the survey before it went out. Because my question as a school board member isn't, do you want to wear a mask or no? I don't want to wear a mask, like, I don't love wearing a mask any more than those of you who would rather hasten not wearing masks. But I would just like to hear, I mean, I've heard from many, many people saying, I trust you to make the best decision possible. Given the current unique situation, which is different from last year. I trust the school board and I will follow, follow school board policy. We found that to be, I mean, month after month in these reports that you gave, it was really heartening. Because I was like, oh, nobody's gonna wear a mask, like, it's fun, I mean, my classes are pocking up while I'm talking, like, it's not like really fun to wear a mask as, as everybody knows. But people really did and, and we had like near a hundred percent compliance. Mr. Swindler got up and said that, Mrs. Gates got up and said that. I just would like us to understand that history, it's a, really, it's better than most school districts did. We were proud that we were able to implement a plan, we were very, it was very clear. Um, we did try and we could probably beef up in- implementation of things like mask breaks, and we were able to do it. Like, like it wasn't hard for us, unlike, I think, a, a larger district, you know, that's not as much like a family like as ours is. You know, might have had more trouble, but in our unique situation, I was beyond impressed with how well every single person did with masking. And I was, it was amazing and, and it wa- and we got up here, I mean, I, I know that you don't habitually, you know, you weren't, you weren't, you were, you were telling us the truth. I mean, you're, you're a truth teller, you know, you weren't, you weren't, you weren't lying every sign time that you got up and told us that everybody did well with masking. When it was required by the school board. So it would've been neat if we could've had a question asking, just saying, will you comply with school board policy regardless? You know, on, on masking, because I think that, I mean, our people are, you know, they're good boys and girls, they're good men and women. I think they would do it, I mean, maybe, maybe not now after all that's been said and done, but at the time, you know. That, that what we have has passed its pre- is prelude, I would say, why, why wouldn't we think?
Those are excellent, excellent points, and especially since, you know, last year was a little bit of a different animal. We did begin the year with letting masks come down when they were in the room seated behind there.
Yeah.
Um, and then the edict came down, so we did have an executive order saying masks were required. And I think people understand it when it's, there's an emergency situation, we have a state of emergency in Virginia, there's an executive order. And then you have to comply, it's not the school board doing that. So the unfortunate situation you're in is now it's your decision and not the state or the C D C really saying this is the federal order. And that's the change, so people will, I think, trust you to make the right decision, but last year, they totally understand it was out of your hands. And this one, I can't really say definitively that it is, even though what the governor had said.
But we can make a guess based on the past.
You can, it's up to you, school board does have authority in this situation.
It would be a logical position to make, to say, well, we could do it before, we might, you know, why would we think that it wouldn't work again? Exactly, that's not an unreasonable position.
Doctor Grimsley, sorry, my understanding unless it's changed is the senator that sponsored the bill. Has also come out and said that her interpretation, the intent was not what Governor Northam has presented, correct?
Yes, and that's created more muddy.
Much more.
So you're like, okay, maybe that is what it, so what?
I would assume the lady, the lady or gentleman that wrote the bill.
Yeah.
Would be able to give us a better understanding of the intent of the bill.
So you, yeah.
Or it's legal.
You have contradictory language, so on the one hand, you cannot deny anyone in person, but on the other, they have to, you know. To the best extent possible, agree with the mitigation sta- um, standards and be compliant with those. But what if they don't, it doesn't really allow much to say, so when you deny access to that, that is my concern. Because that would be an immediate concern, right? Because as soon as you enact that policy and then we have to enforce it, immediately you're gonna see. Because as soon as you enact that policy, and then we have to enforce it, immediately you're gonna see those folks. And I think it's already in the judiciary right now. So the school districts are already, um, our insurance providers said they're watching that case, so.
Quite a bit, that we're not offering a service, we're not providing instruction. Going to force compliance. That may or may not want compliance. We don't sit in judgment of our citizens, we represent them. Look around the room, kinda gives you a bit of an indication how they feel. We have the opportunity to represent them in their decision and their wants. It's not about us forcing compliance or requiring compliance, it's about their option.
I have something I wanna share, and then I'm sure this is. So, so what's happening at this particular point is, this is the board discussion around this topic. And uh, and you know that we've made room to make a motion tonight if we need to change anything. So when I'm reading the C D C language, right, it's not just um, the S B uh, thirteen oh three, this vague. It also, C D C language, August fifth, says a layered preventative strategy is implemented. Now, I would say is, we, we already have that, right? Now, the thing we lack is a metric that says if we have local incidences above, like, like numbers you were talking about, when you said we can add this metric, right? If we have local instances that occur, um, that we could, as a, a, a county escalate to mask-wearing. But the reason that I prefer that approach is, it's built into our process and creates an environment where we can de-escalate from it. Right? So the thing, the thing that I, the thing that is getting in my craw is the idea that there's no longer an executive order, but now we're gonna have a local executive order that says, thou shalt always wear a mask if you're in my building, potentially. Right? So my thought is, we're, we're better off, we're smarter if we say, if we see this type of uptick, we s- we change our criteria to include uh, masking. If we see the downtick, we tell the students, hey, Monday, masks are off. And so I think it's prudent to build that into our current proven model that we used all last year, and that we have, by the way, developed a trust with, rather than overriding it by a, a mandate. So that's, that's where I stand, uh, as far as my uh, opinion of what it is we're trying to manage with these fuzzy words. Right? Is to turn it into something that is more precise, it's locally measurable, and it doesn't matter what, uh, what Falkir or Warren or Madison or Green or whoever does. It's based on what's happening in our county, and it's respectful of, you know, everything that's happened up until now, right? Uh, so anyway, that, that's, uh, that's to me what the, to the extent practicable means to me, is it needs to be locally driven. Uh, and I cannot, I don't know anyone else to, to say this. I cannot sit here and ignore uh, all the public opinion that I've listened to. The survey, which was two-thirds of the people answered the survey, said, don't mask me. Right? And those were, those were parents of students and employees. Uh, the preponderance of the emails, now, I've gotten one or two emails that said, I would prefer if my, if all of my children's classmates were masked, along with my child. But the preponderance of them, and the preponderance of speakers have all been, please don't mask my family, right? And I'd have to ignore all of that, and, and uh, I'm not ready to ignore all of that. I need, uh, my per- my preference is, we modify our algorithm. So anyway, anybody else?
Mr. Mills, could, so you, can you clarify again? So you're not against ever requiring masks if you see it as something that our metric would.
Right. As long as the metrics that we're gathering locally drive that decision, I think it's good to have in the process. Because I think it should escalate, our protection should escalate with the scenario and de-escalate when it's no longer necessary. Otherwise, uh, how does, how do you stop it, right? Do you wait till the school year's over? Do you wait till Christmas? Is it some arbitrary fixed thing, or, or do we make it dynamic? Like, everything has been up until now. Uh, so that's what I would say is, to me, a plausible way forward. And uh, but, you know, we'll see what happens uh, when we get uh, to motion time. Anyway, more discussion?
Sure. C D C is gonna, the C D C is gonna make their opinion based on Virginia as a whole, as a whole. And what's good for Warren County or Falkir County or Fridger County is not the same as what's good for Rappahannock County, because we are not the same. We are a different dynamic, we are different people. If we were the same as them, we would look like them, and we don't. We don't have the same infrastructure, we don't have the same population base. If it works, if it, if it brings consent, because that's the only thing you, we truly governed by is consent. If it brings consent, that, yeah, that sounds like a good idea and we're gonna follow that, we better jump on that.
Mr. Yipman, do you stay exclusively?
If the cases went up, we would have issue. Do I stay exclusively? No, I don't. I don't think anybody else does either. I don't think anybody's. Only anybody's group of ten is just those ten, because your ten have their ten, and they have their ten. And working through COVID, because I never got to quarantine until I got COVID, and I did, and here I am. Um, most everybody else did not either. Some people did, God bless them. Some people could not afford to, or could not. And people go and come and, and go everywhere. And overall, um, whether I'm at work or I'm off, people I talk to have had enough. Um, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, I'm not a doctor. Overall, they've had enough. My populace that's come forward to me overwhelmingly has had enough. There have been others who are on the other side of it, who don't feel the same, who are great people, that I admire and talk to and look forward to talking to again. And they feel differently. They see the podium from that side, and I see from this side, but we both see the podium. We just judge it differently. But the ability, as Mr. Mills said, for us to adjust, yeah, if COVID goes crazy in the school, yeah, we're probably gonna have to wear masks so we can keep the doors open and keep people flowing. But when I came to back to school yesterday, the only two parents showed up, two, not two couples, two parents with masks on, and when the one lady walked up and looked around and said, we don't have to wear these, take them off. We only govern by consent. There will be turmoil if we force it upon people who don't want it, and that's not how a, a government should function. It's not how I function. They're not breaking any law, and we're setting precedents. That, as you said, is that the precedence we wanna set?
If we, if we were to provide, if we were to provide escalation criteria, um, what's reasonable?
So, the, what they have um, in the metric is the one percent data point, which I think is, is a pretty good one. If you have eight cases that, especially if any of them can be intertwined, then that would make a good data point to say, for the next thirty days, two indicator periods, which was our last system too, two indicator periods, layer on additional, that would be a good metric to use. So in that.
Indicator period was two weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
But part of, part of the, the issue that I see, Chris, is that we're working with, when I've done research, you, you try to have a, a one side and another side, and you see where these are. And if we, last year, we were masked, everybody had a mask. So your data is different than it will be this year, if we don't have masks, or if masks are optional. So it's not the same data, it's not the same data point.
Right, but hypothetically, it should be worse, not better.
Probably will be worse, and my, my point being that we had, we would, if we do not mask, especially for those students who are unvaccinated, then we have to wait for somebody to get sick.
Right.
And then you have to make a decision.
Right.
It's, it's like putting up a stop sign after you've had ten recs.
That's what we did.
Which is what happens in.
It's what, it was what we do.
What Virginia does.
Got sick, and then we reacted. Does, does anybody not understand?
Well, let's, um, let's continue.
Does anybody not on the board understand, I'm sure parents do that I've talked to, that your child will be quarantined if they catch COVID. There's a great, you know, there's a distance. I mean, everybody understands that. It constantly, you know, those, those consequences.
Same, same, same thing was last year.
Yeah, and they still are in favor of it.
So last year, we began.
Chris, you were talking about the uh, uh, C D C, the, and Rappahannock being different than everybody else. Except that the Rappahannock Health thing came out with a new edict today that says, and I'll read it.
Is this the, Larry, can, is this the Rappahannock?
Rather than.
That region? Can you speak into your mic closer, please?
Rapidan, Rapidan Region. Uh, as of August five, all K twelve schools, including pre-K classrooms, should implement a requirement for students, teachers, and staff to wear masks indoors regardless of vaccination status. For additional information, see interim guidance twenty-one, twenty-two, school year. That came out in today's data. And I, I guess that's close to home. And that, that's health department people and physicians that are making these recommendations. And that's part of what bothers me the most.
For our region, though.
Pardon me?
For our region.
For our region.
For our region. It's not specifically our county, it's for our region.
Well, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a county health department. Everybody goes somewhere.
You know, there's no gatekeeper.
That's the thing that has bothered me the most. And then you look at, you look at uh, the data points, uh, you know, if, if we want to, and you, you look at other studies, I saw one from Duke University, it said masks are second only to act vaccines as far as protecting children. So, and my goal is to protect kids. You know, I, I don't have, I've got seven grandkids. I don't want any of them getting sick. I don't want any of them getting sick. And, but, and so I'll take all precautions, their parents will take all precautions to make that happen. But I think we as a board have to also be responsible for the precautions that need to be taken to at least have the same database that we had last year. And, and it's proven that this variant, COVID variant thing, is worse than what we had last year. So that's the idea, that's the mindset that I'm working on in the last five days, actually. Because Wednesday, last Wednesday, I was, I was on another, another planet.
Right. Uh, is there anything else tonight that would like to share some ideas or have any uh, contributions, questions? Anybody?
I, I sort of like what we're doing, just from the fact that it's definitive and that you have, you have data that says, okay, now you've got to wear your mask. And even though I know the new variant is very contagious, maybe I'm in, I haven't seen that much here in our county. And we used last year the data, even with the mask, and we had some cases, that I think it's a good preventive way. It seems to be fair to both, in the sense that you've got the reason to put the mask on. And it's right here in your school. And you let people know now, this is what you're going to do. So when it's demanded to wear a mask, they understand why. Or if the reverse, if we're so fortunate to have the reverse happen, you don't have to wear. And I think that's probably a compromise from both sides.
Right, thank you.
I have heard from
Yes?
at least three times as many people as have shown up or spoken to me regarding masks in support of mask-wearing at school. So I'd like to distill some of the arguments that I've heard. And I, as a school board member, I can go on for a little bit, so I have two pages, and, and I, and I just have a few points, eight points that, that I'd like to distill for y'all. Um, I really believe most strongly that as a school board, we need to do all of this in our power to keep school open five days a week and to limit people missing days of school due to sick sickness and quarantine. Requiring masks is necessary to have any reasonable hope of that happening for more people at school, to avoid quarantine, to avoid sickness, to avoid school closure. I feel we would be negligent, knowing what we do to jettison a valuable and immediately available tool against spreading COVID at this time. People do put a lot of trust in our school board, and if past is prelude, they will adhere to our policy. Last week's community survey only asked the preference on masking, not whether you would follow the ser- the, the, the board policy as people did for the whole entirety of last year. In practice, with our current school culture, just encouraging masks, as is our current posture, looks like maybe a fifth to a quarter of the people, and generously, you know, generously put, but there are people um, who, students and staff masking in school. A change in the policy to requiring masks would give us a more meaningful number of pure masks indoors, and it would be effective to limit the spread of the disease. A handful of people masked, it might protect me a little bit. It's not, I mean, it might protect you a little bit that I'm wearing a mask. It's not really doing much. It's, it's doing something, but it's not doing very much. Masks do work if worn according to all credible data and information. We've implemented them successfully. And a lot of the mental stress, remember, we experienced a lot of mental stress last year. It had other contributing factors aside from the fact that people were wearing masks. We started, as you might recall, two-day-a-week instruction with remote instruction for three days. That's hard, like, that's not fun. That causes mental anguish to only get to see, and only get to see half your cohort, most people. Many people to see nobody. That's, that's a cause for mental anguish, being broken apart from your friends. Not having the chance to play school sports last fall. That was hard. I mean, you missed this football season, didn't you, Ryan? Like, that was hard. That wasn't fun for you. Um, it really, I really would like to see y'all, you guys to be able to play football. I'd like to see folks be able to play. And I'd like people to be well in order to play. If you get, if you quarantine because someone in your class got COVID, you know, Matt's not gonna play. Like, it's, it's not, it's, it's gonna be hard on the team. It's gonna be hard on us. It's gonna be hard on our community. We, we have, we do have, it's not like we're throwing out all guidelines, you know? I'd like people to be able to play sports. That's healthy. Like, I just really want that to happen. I want it a lot. I care about people having mental health tremendously. I'm gonna get emotional because I, I, I am emotional about this subject. Their H S A P computers, we've spent a ton on, they don't always work. You know, yesterday, the systems were down, and we were all together, mostly unmasked. Um, what we can carry with us is a mask. That's the protection that we can guarantee that we'll have, just carry it in your pocket. We don't know that, I mean, we'll, we'll try our best as a board and on our administration, we'll work, they work their tails off to do the best they can, but we do have equipment failures. So I'd rather rely on something you can carry in your pocket than a piece of equipment that can fail, and they've had failed, at graduation. They failed a lot. Um, and so I just, you know, this sort of gotta be realistic about technology and how it can help us. Right now, Rappahannock County, as well as neighboring Warren Page and Cockeers County, are currently areas of high transmission, according to C D C. That's different from last Wednesday. There are all upgrades. Rappahannock isn't in a bubble. Staff live in other counties. I regularly, you all regularly grocery shop, we run errands, I go for my work all the way into Northern Virginia. Um, we, we're not in a bubble. There's no moat around Rappahannock. We travel a lot. You know, if we're, if we're, if we're habitually not wearing masks at our school, we're probably habitually not wearing masks in other places that might have even higher transmission. Again, I wanna go back to mental health. It's really important. And I have heard from many parents who rely on our public schools and are very stressed and worried about their kids and families if we don't act to mitigate the disease and by following C D C guidance. Seeing people, especially authority figures, choose not to simply act to mitigate disease spread during a global pan- pandemic is mentally dissonant. It will erode their faith and trust in authority, certainly eroding some of mine. It shakes the foundation of the feeling of safety and trust that we talked about earlier, that was required in order for people to learn. You know, there's peer pressure that will make people decide not to wear masks. We, we know that. I think that also, in the back of one's mind, anybody who's reading a variety of news sources will see that this is not really the thing that we should be doing if we want to stay well. Legally, I believe that we're open to suit if someone dies or incurs high medical bills because of a COVID outbreak that. Legally, I believe that we're open to suit if someone dies or incurs high medical bills because of a COVID outbreak that happens at school. Throughout the US, right now, hospitals are filling with unvaccinated children, kids under twelve. It's happening. Infected with the Delta variant, which is, which spreads way more rapidly than chickenpox. It would be easy to prove our board to be negligent if we don't take reasonable steps to prevent COVID outbreaks. That we can't, we wouldn't have any argument that we didn't know that masking was something that was recommended as a blanket COVID mitigation strategy across Virginia and across the United States. It's all over the place. Corner store requires masks now. You know, I mean, I mean, it's, it's all over the place. We're, we'd be out of step with other local private schools. We'd be out of step with businesses, with Walmart. You know, I mean, I mean, we'd be out of step. I really do think we should see each other's faces. I love seeing people's faces. I just ordered some clear masks to see if I could figure out how to, you know, use the diver's gel and make it so you could see my face through, through the window. I think I could do it. I have, I have swirled before and had some success with those, of those things. I think we could use available COVID funds. It would cost a teeny drop to just give everybody a big headshot name tag that where people who were wearing, who chose to wear masks wouldn't feel as anonymous as those who who didn't choose to wear masks. We have a new principal who probably would like to know all the kids, even the kids who choose to mask. It would be an easy thing to do. It would be cheerful, you know? It would be, I think, I think that's one way we could, we could mitigate. Also, I just think, I mean, we could, we could put into our school schedule just the reg- a regular fifteen-minute break from time to time, instead of just having it be random that teachers can do. We could put into our schedules, go outside, walk around with your friends, take your mask off, have a good time, have a little mental break. I'd love to see that. And even before COVID, I really did advocate for something like the daily mile, something that would have, have people have throughout, not just recess for little kids, but I, I don't know, I feel like I always want a little recess myself. So I'm way past high school. So, um, I just, unfortunately, though we'd all like to, we can't wish the pandemic away. We, if we engage in magical, magical thinking, it will only get us so far, and it possibly could come back to bite us and to harm our community, our small, dear community. We are, so it doesn't make me feel like a, we're in the midst of a surging global pandemic. We do have tools to mitigate its spread. Our board can require their use. Let's engage in the mature practice of making a short-term, small sacrifice of requiring wearing, wearing masks now preventatively, in a preventative manner, knowing what we know, which was a lot more than we knew last fall. It was, we know a lot more. There's been studies about whether masks work. They do. We know so much more than we did, than we, than we did before. I just really think that we can do our part to end the pandemic. Just, we are Rappahannock. We can do anything. We can do it. We, we can. That's my, that's my belief, and I really care for you all, whether you agree or not. And that's why I'm taking this position.
Thank you, Ms. Bynum. Is anyone else that has anything to say or ask Shannon before we move on? Because technically, we just stomped all over her agenda item, right?
That's for discussion.
It's, uh, well, it's interesting. I mean, we do have, there's no other forum for us to do this.
No, we can't get together.
And it has to be done.
And it's pretty big.
And I would just add that I do not doubt, uh, anyone's care for all students, nor should anyone doubt mine.
Right.
We would not be, none, none of us would be doing this if we didn't care.
If you didn't care.
And you, you would not be giving up yet another night to be here if you didn't. So, uh, we're, we're not doubting that in anyone who speaks here. We simply have what we believe to be what's best in mind. Um, here are the comments before we move on.
Did we show another slide? Did we show that slide?
The last slide? Did you get to your last slide?
Didn't, but
Can you get there now?
Yep. So over the, um, here's just one other consideration. What are other counties doing? Um, so after the governor's announcement, you did see quite a few switch, uh, switch gears and require from that chart in surrounding areas. Difficult, if you've been following any of those school board meetings, though, that it's been very, very contentious. So I really appreciate our discourse in Rappahannock. It hasn't gotten to that level. Pray it doesn't get there. We all do care for one another. I care eat, about each and every one of you for your service and all of these kids. I have three of my own in this system, so I would never, ever promote something that I thought would harm any of the kids, but also my own. But, um, yeah, so you can see in Focke here and Culpeper, they're using the one percent margin data point to determine when to
For local data.
mask using local data. I did delve into that a little bit further, so they use that same indicator. So saying that masks could be universally, um, required if we see a one percent mark. Now, I have a, and Courtney Atkins, too, we have a tendency to go a little bit more stringent sometimes. Like, when we saw, um, a few pop up in primary that we were not sure were outbreak-related, to go ahead and say, we're going to automatically quarantine the class to ensure it does not spread. And even against BDH, they said, you don't really need to go that far. And we're like, no, we're not gonna mess around with this. We're not gonna let it, because we can't determine with a, you know, with certainty that in a class of five-year-olds, that there wasn't close contact among the, so we tend to be a little bit more stringent when we need to, and we have the data in front of us, and everybody understood that. Everybody did. And when we have temporary switches to distance learning and and coming back, there's incentives to do better and everybody work together. And that's what we did see a lot.
Now, the thing that's, that, that we discussed, and of course, it's not real yet, but the thing that we discussed about adding this indicator, right, or this, this new metric, uh, as a local parameter, uh, and today, we wait the two periods, which is thirty days before we make any kind of change. If we have a, and those, it's because those parameters lag, right? Uh, so, but if we have a local parameter, uh, we can be agile around that local parameter. And we don't necessarily have to say with this parameter, we're gonna wait, uh, two periods when we have the data locally, right?
Right. And that would empower administration to react right away, rather than having to wait, here's the data, what do you wanna do this month?
Right, so agility.
It would help a lot being able to shift that way based on the data, yes.
Right. And I think that we need to, 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 to make sure, if we're going to modify, if we're gonna modify our process tonight, that we need to make sure that that's built in, that that agility is tuned to the local data and we're able to respond, um, more quickly than thirty days, right? So if we respond within a week or respond within a day, we need to figure out what's reasonable. Now, I don't, since I haven't been sitting at the table where you're making those decisions, I don't know how much time is required to react properly. Right? You gotta get the message out to people. You gotta tell the, the staff. You gotta, everything's gotta get shifted gears, right? So it's gonna take time.
They can do this pretty quickly if it's snowing. Everybody's gonna know it.
Well, and it's particularly like that. Like, last year, if you recall, our, our team works really quickly, and we have a, a localized contact tracing team. So as soon as we're notified, we get the list, we're calling BDH, they're with us the whole way. So we're not doing this by ourselves and just thinking we're right. No, we're working with them the whole time. And, um, usually, we, they love our system because we can respond so much more quickly, whereas we were waiting on BDH to do all their contact tracing. Sometimes up to seven days, and by then their quarantine period is almost up. And by then, you don't even know who all the contact tracers. That's why you saw a lot of schools switching to distance learning for longer periods of time, to wait for that process to, to go through. We respond really quickly. And the longest contact tracing period we had was two days, because it was a larger group. Um, and we were able to contain that, and it did not, um, create any significant spread. Uh, so they, they are, um, very well trained at that. They also do, uh, terminal cleaning of any areas. The, we have a COVID positive person. We do extra deep cleaning on those days. We may do, um, and of course quarantining of anybody who's a close contact. But an important point, I think Ms. um, Bynum did point out that parents do need to know. Because I do hear from parents that say, well, how do I avoid my child being quarantined? So if you, the new close contact definition is between three, three and six feet, where both parties are masked, I no longer have to quarantine you. Before, it didn't matter if you were in a, I always say that, a hazmat suit built by NASA. If you were within six feet, BDH was going to quarantine you. That is no longer the case. So if you are within the three to six foot and both parties wearing a mask, I don't have to quarantine you now, and BDH won't. So that's a new recommendation that only applies in K twelve settings. So that's an exemption to keep kids in school that was created. So that's important to know.
To really communicate clearly to parents.
Also
What's also important, as I understand it, that when youngsters are in class and behind their plexiglass, they, they don't have to mask. They can drop that mask down as long as they're within that plexiglass. I think the only place that we're looking at masking for a, a total population would be in high-volume areas, where kids are walking down the halls or, or whatever, not outside, but inside.
That's what we did last time. Exactly right. So when we had a universal masking, when that, that's kind of what we did, too. But then, when the executive order came in, it was all the time. And then we had to develop all those mask breaks and try to make sure.
But we're the ones making the rules now, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we're, we're, we don't get anybody to do it for us. Darn it all.
So I'm saying we do it like we did it before, and we were pretty dang gone successful with that. Uh, of having, like, everybody carry a mask. You go out in halls, stick it on. Everybody's in the classroom, behind your plexiglass, take it off.
And maybe as we're approaching, and that's something I would definitely suggest, if we're approaching um, numbers that look like we may teeter into that higher level of school transmission to say we're close. And if we were teetering on the edge of that, maybe that's a good practice to, to implement. But the universal masking would have to hit that number to be truthful to what we decide. If, if that's what the board chooses to do and use that one percent indicator.
Well, here's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking we had better, uh, work this out now um, so that by the time we get to public comment, they know what they're commenting about. Because either we're, uh, masks all the time, people, or we're a, don't mask me person, or here's the, here's our plan, here's Plan A, right? And if we can say together what could possibly be an alternative plan to one of these two opposing views, then we better do it now. It's the right time to do it. And that way, when we get time down the road that we're making a motion, at least we know what we're making a motion about. And at least people will know what they're speaking to when they probably intend to address us this evening, right? So, so, uh, also, uh, different topic, before we let go of it, though. Before we get to the point where we try to formulate that, and our poor clerk tries to write it down in some fashion, right? So last year, last school year, there was a conversation at one point about whether we as a school system, we're gonna be able to host, uh, some type of vaccination clinic or something. Can you tell me where we stand with that?
So, um, we, we're initially reaching out. I know Sean Pollster is working on maybe getting another local clinic going, and we work directly with them. And the last time it was, um, the, the county administration we worked with, um, to get that here and host it at the school. Of course, we'd be willing to do that at any time.
And when they provide the ch- the children's vaccine, you know, some type of letter that goes home that says, this is available at school. Do you want your child to participate in this thing?
Yes.
Right?
And, and the neat thing, too, is with our wellness center, we're exploring the possibility. They, they are, they have some workaround things that, uh, they have to work out, uh, to provide vaccines for, for kids here. If, for any parent who wants it for their child, um, other, other ones, too, immunizations that are required to, to schools. So that could be a possibility as well. Um, and it's certainly a diagnostic possibility. That gives us a whole nother mitigation strategy we didn't have last time. We can know immediately. So that's pretty nice, too.
Right. So I'm
Wes, go ahead. Like I said earlier, I, I, in the last five days, I've probably read thirty different studies from ten different universities and medical schools and whatever, whatever. And the one that struck me the most was one from Duke. Vaccination is the strongest method of preventing the ill effects of COVID. Students under twelve are ineligible for vaccines. Masking then is one of the best, most readily available methods to protect them from the disease. And this is, you know, two high-end physicians that have studied seventeen thousand kids through North Carolina and Wyoming and Colorado and so forth. So, you know, I, I could, I can probably live with some kind of a, a program that, that we say in mass areas, we mask up, every kid carries a mask. Teacher says, all right, we're going down the hall, we mask up. We're in the classroom, we're good. Uh, and have some school rules for that kind of thing. I'm really worried about the elementary kids. I, I worry about high school kids as well, but high school kids can get vaccinations. And you could almost say, if you're vaccinated, don't wear a mask. Go for there. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Right. So here's, here's where I'm at with this. And I'm trying to frame this up, but I'm just gonna try to lay it this way. There is a stance, which is, I'm gonna call A. A is mandatory mask, everybody. If you're in the building, you have a mask. There is alternative B, which says, modify our current process such that if there is, uh, uh, one percent, uh, uptick in, uh, in cases, that we escalate
Mask.
to mask. Uh, such that in the case where this local metric is then captured and it reduces, that we then are have the ability locally to deescalate. And escalation could include any number of things, uh, that is determined, uh, by that. Although, um, I would just add, in addition to that, I think Mr. Grove is correct that high-volume areas, like a bus
Well, that's required.
Do, yeah, the bus is required, but what you're talking about is basically any forum where you're inside of a building in a dense area.
Exactly.
Should also be a masked area. So if the kids are getting off the bus and moving through the hall, and basically this, by the way, this is the same thing that I have to do at work. I'm fine as long as I'm working at my desk, but if I wanna get up and go anywhere, they made me put my mask on, right? And I'm vaccinated. I'm like, leave me alone. But that's the way the federal government is managing people right now. So, so I understand the high-volume, uh, idea.
For what it's worth, private industry is doing the same thing.
Not all of them, but, all right. So, so anyway, so item B, so item B is, um, basically tracking, uh, the cases and escalating and deescalating bases on the local, uh, uh, local data, right? And, and doing it dynamically. You don't have to have a board meeting for us to figure out, okay, now we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna do that. It's all done because we have a process that's proven and effective. And then stance C, so that was B, stance C is, don't make me ever wear a mask again in my entire life. So that's C. So I only have three. I've got, uh,
What about the high volume?
The masking mandate. That's part of B. So B is capturing the escalation and adapting the process based on local data, and the deescalation's then also built into our model. It also includes masks in high-volume areas, right?
So you would say every kid needs to bring a mask, at least.
We're gonna have to have it to get on the bus. So all you difference is, if they, if they get out of the mom's car and go trotting in the school, they're gonna put a mask on to get to their classroom.
I, I
High volume, it's any high-volume area that's inside, right? Not the classroom.
So that, so when they're in their classroom.
High volume is
Not the classroom. No, not in the classroom. And what are we telling our
But we, we, we've got good, we have good distancing in the classroom now. Is that not right?
In most, in most.
But not all.
Especially at the elementary, where we knew that we may not have masks and we'd have an unvaccinated population. That's where we focused our efforts on making sure we had lower class sizes in those areas. And that's where we saw higher levels of, of COVID cases popping up, too, is
Okay, so
No outbreak, but
So must every elementary classroom, there's at least a four or five-foot separation?
At least the three-foot rule is being followed.
I understand three-foot rule.
Six foot where possible, and where our transition classes are in your K one, two area, where we're most concerned about germs and transmissibility, because that's the age, um, those class sizes are much, much lower, between about eleven and fourteen per class.
Plexiglass?
Yes.
Yeah, they have
And they, and they still, and we still are under the, the assumption that if, if I'm masked and Rachel's not,
Like, we could take off our mask.
And she comes up with COVID, I don't have to quarantine.
You do, because she's not.
Because she's not.
If she were, then no.
Currently, we would be okay if I got COVID.
But we would both be okay.
I mean, I would be insane.
But if, if, if Wes had, or if If Wes had, or if Chris had COVID and I had a mask, then I don't have to quarantine.
You both have to be masked for not having to quarantine. So to avoid quarantine, if you're within three to six feet, anything over that, it doesn't matter. If you're over six foot, you're fine. You're out of the the bubble.
And 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 simply, that that's still in accordance with, we said to parents already at two previous meetings, we strongly encourage mask wearing, but it's your choice for your children, right? Your family. So that's still in accordance with that thinking, right? That's still in accordance with that thinking, right?
Except we're putting some caveats on that.
We are. I'm just saying that the one that you described, I think, still falls into that category. There was one other thing I was gonna mention, though. Now I forgot.
I heard Mr. Grove express particular concern for the under twelve population. I mean, one thing we could add on to those letters would be having universal masking in the elementary school, but having people make their dis- their their call based on the information that we have in the high school, knowing that we would stick to our current, you know, our current plan regarding. It it would, it could make some logical sense to have a slightly different set of rules for a largely unvaccinated group compared to for a group. That that could be largely vaccinated. You know, I mean, hopefully more and more people are taking opportu- yeah.
Alright, so item D then is to have mandatory masks at the elementary and at will at the high school.
Like with the same things we're talking about.
Yeah.
With the caveats.
The same things.
With the classroom caveats and the.
And clarification, yes.
Yeah.
So I understand, because it's really getting confusing. Mask required on the school bus. Nine percent of kids ride the school bus. Mask required if you leave your classroom and go to art, correct?
That's not current, not right now, not currently.
We're gonna start off this school year saying you have to do that, or we're going to escalate to that? Is what I'm trying to understand.
If the data shows that we need to escalate to that level, that's what we're escalating to.
That's the step we take.
That's the step we take. That's what I'm, that's what I'm laying out. It's data-driven, based on local data.
So the the, I think the particular question, though, so the step of adding in like mass areas, the hallways, do we start with that or is that something we step up to and then step up to universal?
If we started with that, it might limit the quarantine if we have an.
That's just my question.
Do we start out escalated and then deescalate? Or do we start out, you know, and then we escalate later if we need to? That's the question, right? That's the question superintendent's asking, so.
I I would recommend we start out with this limited amount of of masking and let kids know, kids are, kids are gonna, they're gonna do what's right.
So if we if we do that and we start it out, uh and the data after two weeks shows no cases, do we deescalate? That's what I'm saying. I'm saying it it create the model that facilitates both.
It could be that that proves that the model is working as as other cases.
It may, it may say that that is what's working, yes.
Well, then we put them back on.
After we get somebody sick.
Do we start out as we are now and then we take that step if we have an issue and then we take the next step if we have another issue? That would, that was what I thought we were going for.
Well, it's not, well, we yeah, we need to work it out before things uh get further down the road, unfortunately, so.
You need to have something to start with.
We don't need too many of these things or or we'll, none of us will know what's happening. So we have mandatory masking, number A. Uh B, uh the idea would be we start out just as we are now. It's strongly encouraged. If things escalate beyond one up ti- one percent uptick, uh then we in and we put masks in place until the one percent uh reduces. And in high-volume areas, um we require a mask.
Is that?
That would be B.
That's B, right?
That's all B. The difference being.
You gotta define high-volume areas.
It's the anytime you're in transit between point A and point B.
During the hallways on the school bus, right?
Uh hallways and school bus.
School bus, we have no choice. We don't have to stop.
How about, well, I assume we won't be having any big assemblies for a time being.
Right now, things are scheduled as normal, um as normal as possible with understanding to to distance because our we are low number right now.
That would be a high-volume area then.
That's the will of the board. Right now, it's.
So that's what we'll say. If we're indoors and we're having a dense grouping of any kind, then of course, you can't eat lunch while you're masked on, but.
Or you can't keep the three feet or the three feet, then you have to wear a mask.
Right. If you can't maintain some kind of reasonable distance in a group, then we have to mask. So that would be the escalation, though. So the current B says strongly encourage parents to do what they think is right. Uh we have this escalation built into our plan. If things start to deteriorate, we uh by one percent, we escalate. And we don't deescalate until the number recovers, right? That's B. High-volume areas include.
We we didn't mention the K seven, like the elementary's having two different, having the elementary school require masks to start out with.
No, we didn't. So I can get there yet.
That would be like an A, between A and B thing.
Alright, so I was trying to create A. And C is don't mask my, don't mask my kids. And and by the way, admini- administration and teachers are all adults. They're gonna do do what they want, you know? Yeah, necessarily. So 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 uh they're gonna fall in line with escalations, right? If they're in a highly populated area. But if they're in their classroom doing their job, the students are behind the Plexiglas in three feet or six feet or whatever, and so the environment should be conducive to education, hopefully. C was don't mask me uh every in my life again. And item D was uh we start out with masks in the elementary and and nothing, no requirement at the high school. Which disregards the model, by the way.
And and the modified process at the high school would be the the D.
What's the modified process?
The B process you were talking about. I would say.
B at the high school. And mandatory at the elementary.
Right.
Alright, good. At least we know what these things are.
It's good to line it out like that. Thank you for.
So these are the four scenarios that that we're considering. That's enough, right? I would also like to add this. If, no, I would, because we have to talk about timing. School starts in the morning.
Yes.
It's a good time to teach people.
And whatever we're about to do, you have to know, I cannot expect Mr. Seward or Ms. Gates to respond between whenever we get out of here, ten PM, I don't know, hopefully not, and 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 six o'clock in the morning, how they're gonna implement something. We need to make sure we provide time somehow for implementation. So whatever we're about to do, uh since it's a last-minute thing, we better provide time for the staff. Whatever's reasonable. Uh so we appreciate a recommendation there. What's reasonable? Depends on what we decide. Right. So when we make a motion, it will be effective, whatever it is that we make, it will be effective based upon superintendent's recommendation, okay? Uh because she'll have to decide how I'm gonna try to implement this thing that was created at this table tonight, okay? Is that alright? That way, too, we're not activating it immediately. And then everybody in the room is in trouble because they didn't bring their mask and they're like, oh, great, now I'm violating something, right? Because that could get ridiculous. I'd be in violation too. Alright, so that's A, B, C, and D. You know what they are? You're good. Okay, we know what they are. I sure hope you followed that. No. You know what? If Ms. Geener, if Ms. Geener can't follow it, we're all in trouble. She's the sharpest person in the room. So um A, master mandatory for everybody. I don't wanna talk about it anymore. Local executive order. B, escalation is built into our system. And if you're in a, in a, in a high-volume area, master mandatory, high school, elementary school, period. That would mean we start school with no masks.
Except in high-volume areas. So I think that's where the confusion is. When you say escalation.
On the school bus and high-volume areas. It is based on that. If we're gonna declare masks mandatory.
If we're everywhere, all the time. Proposing B is gonna be masking in.
To start out.
So is that deescalatable?
That? Good point. Is there a way to deescalate from masks and high-volume areas?
Have a trigger like the CDC not having the blanket mandate or the or the blan- the blanket recommendation. Right now, there's a blanket recommendation for us to require masks. So so I could say that if the CDC re- withdraws that blanket recommendation for wearing masks, that would make a lot of sense to draw that from from the from high-volume areas. I I that would be a trigger that I would be comfortable with. And that would be widely available and would be a little bit more comprehensible to the public because that makes the top of the news when the CDC says something like that. That's what, you know, that's what makes the news.
Alright, so good point. I appreciate bringing that up. So uh starting whenever it's practicable, we try to have masks on in high-volume areas at the beginning of school. Buses, hallways, basically. And the escalation building the model. That's B. That's B. C is don't ever make me wear a mask again. And uh item D was uh we start off with mandatory at the RC, at RCES, modified process, which is B at the high school, okay? That's all that meant. That means we go back to B at the high school. So high school's the same B and D, but the elementary's mandatory, okay? Those are our four discussion points. And coming out of this whole thing, after public comment, if there's a motion, it needs to be about one of those four. And I'm really hopeful we won't be talking about this next month, right? No, I'm really hopeful that we were not trying to create yet another motion, because for the past two meetings, uh I thought we had already counted. Of course, we got new data, so. So. I'll remind you of these if you want, before you get up, if you intend to speak tonight. Alright. Do you have anything else you wanna add?
No, sir. I'm good.
I appreciate it. Um alright, we're ready to move on. Item five dot one is a report of the Headwaters representative.
Oh, I have a report. Just a moment. I gotta wake up my phone so I can read it with my bifocals. Okay, Headwaters sponsored an ice cream truck with free ice cream for everyone outside the front of the elementary school yesterday during meet, during the meet teacher events. Headwaters also gave a lot of food out to our new teachers and to staff yesterday, I mean today. There is a new Headwaters website and it um is gonna be unveiled next week, so check it out. They're extending um scholarships to preschools with with special needs. So um they're sponsoring two scholarships to CCLC um for this year. So that's a really neat thing to go above and below where we are. Um plans are also being made for after-school with Lacy Jenkins as the official program director. And the summer course is already planned for next summer um from June twentieth to July first. And that's what I had. I had a nice time meeting outdoors with Brittany the other day.
Thank you. Uh MVGS?
We we did not meet, but there was a um directive from him, from Mountain Vista Governor's School that based on the idea that they're drawing from seven counties that they're gonna do mandatory masking uh at Mountain Vista.
And they started two days ago.
Alright, thank you. Um BSBA Annual Convention, that's in November. I don't remember the date, so I didn't look at the website. And it's in person, right? And we need to know seventeen through the nineteenth? Now typically, we only go for that one day typically, right? So what day would that be? The eighteenth?
We go Thursday.
Thursday with the eighteenth, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And do you know, does it say how much it costs per person this year?
Too much.
Had somebody asked me this. How much does that cost again? I said, I think it's about three hundred dollars a person, right? That's three hundred twenty-five dollars. Then he said, who, do you pay for that? I said, no, you pay for that. And so you need to know, these are the kinds of things that are expected of us to participate in. And that there's a cost associated with them. And uh there's workshops we go to and and mill about with other school board members in the state. So that's an annual event at three hundred twenty-five dollars per person. And so I guess before we get to next month, we need to know who's going, right? So take a look at your calendar, see if you can fit it in. And a lot of times, we've gone down in the morning, come back at night, right?
Go early, come back late.
Go early, come back late. And and we can't ride more than two in a car, right? Rules. Alright, alright.
You wanna know now?
Certain, no, I don't wanna know. Next month, okay? Next month? Good, so here we are, public comment. Uh before we start, I need, I just wanted to get a flavor of the crowd. So if you came here tonight and your desire was to support a mask mandate for the school, would you raise your hand? Okay, if you came here tonight and you were here to support, don't ever put a mask on me again in my entire life, raise your hand, right? If you're here and you thought proposal B was at least interesting, would you raise your hand? Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Okay, I worked hard on that one. And so uh well, I think it's practical. That's why. To the extent practical. By the way, if if we ever, I know I'm not supposed to talk now, it's your turn. If we ever get in a a case uh a litigation, we have to show due diligence.
Yeah.
Did we try to do something that was measured and based on data? We have to support that thing. I think we're getting there, right? Because guess what? Guess who's gonna pay the bill if we get litigated? So I think we're doing our best to protect the children.
We all are, because we all pay taxes.
All I'm saying is, we're doing our best to protect everybody because we have that responsibility as well, okay? So uh I'm gonna open the floor to public comment. I did ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. I generally try to do this. I don't enforce it very well. But I can tell you, my opinion is if you can't say it in thirty minutes, I'm not sure you know what you need to say, right? And that's me. So I encourage you to come, share with the board uh what you're thinking. I appreciate you coming out. And if you would rise and come to the podium and say your name and the district uh from which you come, I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, uh Mr. Chairman.
You may need to um get closer to that. And and a lot of people actually hold it, but I appreciate that. Thanks.
Alright, I don't wanna talk too loud.
Alright, so I just wanna make sure everybody can hear you. That's.
That's very good. Um my name is Jeff Line. I'm in the Stonewall Hawk Horn District of Rapid Hennet County. My children were born in the county, uh have graduated from the fine Rapid Hennet County High School. And as we uh found ourselves, we were active in the Childcare and Learning Center growing up. Just wanna let you know that I'm a proponent of uh public education here in the county. I was served on the Board of Directors of that fine organization. And also, my wife was one of the pioneer members of the uh Headwaters outfit, so. Been always a great supporter of our board of, of our uh school board because you guys have always done a great job for the school, always interested in making sure that the school was a fine, outstanding school. We had good students coming out. My my daughters are representative of that. Uh it's an interesting new world. And so I don't think that um, you know, there's a blanket check on how the public may continue to support the school board if the school board goes awry. And so I wanna thank you for your balanced approach to this uh issue here in the past. And now that you're on a cusp here, I wanna encourage you to please uh don't go the way the rest of the um uh the Northern Virginia area has chosen to go. Um but this is not Loudoun County. Thank God you're not the Loudoun County School Board. Uh but uh your support is because, our support for you, I believe, is because you guys have had our interest in mind, our interest as parents. One of the big issues that we have these days is the parental rights being eroded uh by uh government organizations, government officials. One of the big issues that we have these days is the parental rights being eroded, uh, by, uh, government organizations, government officials. Don't take away our freedoms. We're Virginians and we'll fight for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Who'll be next? Yes, sir.
Gary, wow, Gary H. Hampton. Well, I'll try not to. It's, it's in the pastor gene, I guess. Um, we'll get the moderate side of the way first and then anyone else wants to speak. Um, I'm more concerned about what happens to our community around this decision. I'm not a doctor. I'm not an epidemiologist. I don't really know the truth of all of this. But I do know that I hate seeing, uh, my community divided, uh, and divided bitterly. And especially when it's parents and kids. Uh, there's nothing worse than a community that we've, uh, I'm Chair of Headwaters, I think you know that. We've worked very diligently to create just the highest level. Of cooperation, mutual regard and, um, contribution to the, the betterment of our public schools. And, um. I've worked diligently, you've all worked diligently. I'd hate to see any single issue. Begin to shatter that, tear it apart, shred it, and have neighbors not speaking to each other and kids knowing that their parents aren't talking to their next door neighbor about something. I'm also, um, I guess I can say mad as hell. If Richmond's gonna jerk us around, I wish they'd be clear about it. They've, the governor has left all of us now in an impossible position. There's too many contracting, uh, con- contradictory. And, you know, some of you know, in my checkered past, I was an attorney. Ambiguity. Boy, do attorneys love ambiguity. Uh, and it just provides so many opportunities for anybody, a parent, a teacher, uh, a member of the school board, uh, anybody. Can bring a suit because they're gonna claim somebody's not in compliance with either the legislature or the, or the, or the governor or somebody. I fully suspect that within, uh, two weeks, um, there's gonna be so much uproar around the Commonwealth that somebody in Richmond's gonna have to step up and say enough of this. It'd be a shame if in those two weeks, we do irreparable damage to our community because we're fighting over something. So I wanna support B. Don't do anything different tonight. Except clarify what you did at your last special meeting, which was to say, add another part of your matrix. Then I believe, I, the superintendent knows, and you may know, but I believe from what I read. That if you give her the authority to change the metric and then you live within, you're already what you told her, which was to protect our kids and keep them safe. Given the discussion she's heard tonight, in that two week period, which I think it will take to clear this up. Um, God forbid we see a spike, but she'll respond immediately, or two days, almost immediately. And our kids will be protected. If there's no spike, then you haven't changed anything. Masks are still highly, uh, encouraged. But no one's required to send their kid to school with masks. That would be my suggestion for how you get through the immediate period if things change. If the governor comes out and orders it, the governor comes out and orders it, then we all have to comply. If Richmond continues to dittle around. Then we wait on our own local conditions to determine what our own local school board does. And I believe then we'll all support you. Or at least a much higher percentage will support you, which is the goal. So thank you for all your hard work. Um, I don't envy any of you tonight being faced with this mess that is not of your making. And I just hope we can keep this spirit of cooperation and goodwill and support for our public schools going through the next couple of months. So thank you again. I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Gary. Who'll be next? Yes, sir.
Hi, um, I'm Joe Ryanbolt, uh, Jackson District. Um, so I got, I think I'll have five children now go through the school. I got, uh, three in there right now. So you guys do a great job. I really appreciate it. I don't wanna get all into the effectiveness of masks. I think we go all over the place. I know you had studies saying masks were useful. I could, I could throw a study that say masks were garbage and they, they truly are. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna get lost in that.
Hey, Mr. Ryanbolt, can you, right here, right here?
Yeah.
Can you make sure you're speaking into that?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, Joe Ryanbolt, Jackson District, five kids in school. I don't wanna get lost in the masks. How good they are, they're garbage.
Okay. That was, that was great.
That covers that.
She did a job with radio.
So, but what we haven't talked about, and now you're, you guys are responsible, is you could, uh, potentially mandate masks. So we're assuming masks are healthy. They're not healthy. That's clear to any study. You could find these studies all over the place. You're, you're rebreathing your carbon dioxide. They're not healthy at all. That is clear. It's easy. I work in the HVAC business. I, I set systems up for carbon dioxide. If you wear a mask more than a few minutes, you're already beyond carbon dioxide levels. You're already rebreathing your mess. You shouldn't be doing it. But that's, i- if you're a grown adult, if that's what you wanna do, whatever you, that's great. Now we're forcing on kids. That ain't right. Especially cloth masks. They, they're, they're beyond. They actually store bacteria, pathogens. They should not be wearing cloth masks. The blue masks are garbage. They still, they still store bacteria, pathogens. But it's the carbon dioxide is, is my biggest worry, uh, among other things. So this is what you're gonna be forcing the kids to do. This is not healthy. There's gonna be repercussions to this. I mean, we're not seeing it now, but we're forcing kids to put a mask on. That is not healthy. Now, again, we're talking about a disease that i- 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 in the history of COVID, it has killed zero children in the country, zero. It has not, and there's not one kid that has died from purely COVID. They've had COVID. There's been children that have died from COVID. But it's been comorbidities and these kids are seriously ill, okay? There has not been one death. So we're mandating wearing a mask that is not healthy, that is not good for the kids. And that's what it potentially looks like we're, we're gonna do. Uh, I support no mask at all. Uh, if the parents wanna put masks on the kids, that's fine with their children. If a, a teacher wants to wear a mask, that's fine. Uh, I can't tell anybody, you know, but, okay.
Very respectful, yes.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next?
Dan Ellis, um, Stonewall Hawthorne. And I'm sitting here, I'm kinda furious in the stands because this is my second time I had to come out to a school board meeting. About something that we shouldn't really be having to deal with. A lot of it has to do with the, the governor, and I don't care whether you're Democrat or Republican. He's being very spineless about this. He's just kinda being very ambiguous, so he gets as many people scared as possible. Well, I'm not scared. And y'all shouldn't be either. And what I wanna talk about is. I know that at least eighty percent of the county has to be against this. I don't, Ms. Bynum, I'm not disagreeing with you totally, but. I could just make a couple of phone calls and I could have probably fifty people emailing you saying, no way do I want masks in the Sperryville area. Mr. Grove, respectfully, I haven't, I haven't called you because I already kinda figured how you stood on the mask thing. But my, my five, my, my father, my brother, everybody on my road pretty much is against masks. I'm totally against masks. The man that just spoke said it better than anybody. You're breathing carbon dioxide back in. It is not good for you. It's not good for kids. I'm not picking on you, Mr. Grove. Um, I was bored during the, this meeting. I just watched you with your mask. I saw you, I just counted in the first hour, seven times you took it off. And that's fine, I'm fine. No, no. Um, I even took pictures at the document, but, and one time it was for fifteen minutes. And that's fine with me. I have no problem with that. But you're a retired man. You can do what you want. You have pretty much free will. These kids are being told, no, you will wear masks all day long. And let me tell you, if they take a mask off for ten seconds to get a little breather, they're gonna have a teacher telling them, you put your mask back on, Johnny. You put your mask back on. You're retired. I don't know if you're retired. Some of y'all are retired.
I look that old. I, I don't dye my hair. I'm not retired.
And some of your farmers, but y'all don't have to sit around for seven, eight hours wearing a mask all day.
Yeah, I do, actually. Sorry.
Okay, well, you do. I'm glad. I'm, I'm happy for you.
Yeah.
But I know Mr. Uben, he's probably a policeman. You probably don't have to keep it on all day. You can probably, when you're in your car, you take it off. And they get ma- people get mask breaks. Um, like I said, Mr., Mr. Grove, I know grabbing your mask and readjusting it five and six, seven times, that's getting stuff all over your hands, it germs. It's just, you're asking kids to, to readjust their mask, take it off and on a hundred times a day. And I'm just not for masks at all. And the last thing I'll say, I just thought about, because Mr. Ryanbolt was talking about the carbon dioxide thing. I think we all know Kenny Burke, right? The track coach? Real good man. Well, I was at the cross-country track meet when he had, I think a heart attack is what it was. I was there. I'd just shaken his hand a couple of minutes before. That man's in pretty good shape. He had one of those N ninety-five masks, big nozzle thing on. It was warm. And he's forced to wear that because that was the mandate last year. And he had to run to get something just for a little bit. And I know, he, he's never told me that, but I know in my mind, the reason he had a heart attack, he had that mask on. And he's breathing that carbon dioxide and he's not getting enough i- uh, oxygen because when I wear mine outside and I'm working, mowing. I'll, I'll use it to keep the allergies away. I'll have to take it off and I feel like my heart's about to explode sometimes, so. I, this mask stuff is ridiculous and I think we all do with the will of the people of Rappahannock and do what we told you to do, not have any masks.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Uh, who'll be next? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Claire Snelson. I'm at the Wakefield District. Um, I have a son who is starting eighth grade. Uh, this year, he's been in Rappahannock Schools since kindergarten. Um, I am in support of option B. I did come here thinking that we should lean towards a mandatory, mandatory mask mandate. I don't think it's necessary in all situations. I think following along with. Where there's the highest possibility for transmission to mitigate that. It will help you with litigation down the road if that becomes a problem. But in a classroom learning setting. A mask does provide a hindrance in learning for some kids. It is hard for them. It's a mental health issue, but so is the consequences that could come from COVID. Um, we and our family have a case, actually two cases that are higher risk. I have an autoimmune disease. And our youngest son, who's a year and a half, was born three months prematurely and to no fault of his own, has chronic lung disease. We have kept him home and away from anything that could transmit the disease to him or the virus. Since his birth. He came home two weeks into the, um, mandated lockdown. So if something were to come home, you know, it's shown that this Delta variant could even be transmissible, transmissible. Through vaccinated individuals. Our son, who is in school, is vaccinated. And, but if that were to come into our house. It would surely land our son in a hospital for months, if not worse. He's already been hospitalized twice in his life just from the common cold because he has lung issues. So. What I'd ask you to consider is that it goes beyond just the students, but the community in itself. We need to do everything we can to limit that. So I would be in support of option B where those higher. You know, groups of people are to limit it. But in a classroom setting, I think where the social distancing is already in place. It's not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire, did you say where you were from? Wakefield, sorry, I missed it. Thanks. Who'll be next? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Babcock. I'm in, um, I'm in Flint Hills, so I don't know what district I'm in. Can you hear me?
Close your to that mic a little bit.
Jennifer Babcock.
Jennifer Babcock?
Mm-hmm. I'm in Flint Hills, so I don't know.
Mr. Rubin.
Alright, so, um, I live with my eighty-one-year-old mom. Who, um, recently, she was, she's been in a group in Rappahannock County of, um, elderly people who like. Um, share stories and stuff like that. And they recently asked everyone to go back to virtual because, um, even though. Even people who have had the vaccine in the elderly population ha- have been, there have been cases of them getting COVID. So they, they asked them to go back to virtual meetings. Um, so I'm, I have a, a son in first grade. Um, he, you know, with this, with the Delta variant coming around, I, I'm really concerned that he could bring something home. To my mom, even though she is vaccinated, she could potentially get something like that. Um, and I understand everybody's point of view, like. You know, everybody has such differing, differing opinions on this, but I'm really much more in favor of B because, um, that would give. You know, it, it wouldn't be a, a consistent masking for the whole entire school day. It would be, you know, just for shorter periods of time. And, and I think that that would be reasonable, um, to prevent the spread of anything. And we really, really, really. Don't wanna have another school closure. I really, like, that was torture. So if we could prevent that, that would be awesome. And if it just requires just shorter amounts of time for wearing a mask, I really. Think that that would be reasonable.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Torture. Hey, you know what? Last week when we were together, go, go ahead and come up. Last we were together, uh, we had a graduate that said his senior year was a dumpster fire. And so, so torture, dumpster fire, uh, those are the memories that we're making, right? Yes, ma'am.
I'm kinda short. Can you hear?
Um, it, it's best to try the, yeah. Grab the mic like you're a rock star. I wanna make sure everybody can hear you.
Hey, my name's Michelle Fincham. I think I'm from the Hampton District. That's what my husband just told me.
Must be true, then, huh?
Yes. So I'm a parent of three children in our school system, one of which is five. He was four last year. He was in pre-K. Um, a third grader, and now I have a child in high school. I'm also a teacher here, so I'm on both sides. And it's really hard when I hear from people that have not sat in my classroom. And this is for a lot of different people, and actually heard what these children are saying. And how it affects them mentally, socially, and their health. Now, I have no problem with somebody that wants to wear a mask. I would never judge anybody. To each their own. But with that, I would like to keep my own freedom and be able to make my own choice for my child. And I don't want my five-year-old masked. I do not want him masked in his classroom. I don't like option B. I don't like C or D. I like option E that I'm making.
Okay.
That we stick to what we had at the previous board miss, um, meeting.
Yeah.
Cause I have a lot of trust and faith in our school system, especially our superintendent, to make the right choice. If we need to mask again, basically if our numbers go up. So I probably just contradicted myself, but. Um, you know, if we do see a big uptick, I would understand why we would have to mask at that point, but I don't understand why we can't try it. Not only that, but I, from a science standpoint, I really don't believe in the masks. I just don't. That's my personal opinion. It's not. Anybody else's and it's gonna be really hard. You're telling me I have to enforce something that I don't believe in. And I have issues with that. So, um. I hope as a teacher, uh, and I, I know you guys will make the right decision, but I did wanna come up here and just voice my opinion. And whatever you decide, you decide, but I really would lean towards just leaving it as it is for now, allowing the parents to make that choice. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Here another? Yes?
Uh, Kevin Williams. I'm in the Wakefield District. Uh, first off, uh, I wanna thank, uh, Dr. Grimsley for what she's done, what she's leading her crew last year. This year, I watched her sitting up here just a while ago trying to give a presentation, trying to get through it. And then we went into this big debate. She didn't even get to finish her presentation all the way through.
I apologized to her before the meeting started, just so you know, because I knew that was gonna happen. But, yeah, you're right. And, uh, so it was no way to treat her.
So where I'm, where I'm going at, means I have it.
Sorry.
Ba- basically, I'm sitting here listening to all the comments and everything. And I'm one-two. I'm in fire and rescue. Uh, do it for a. And I'm one-two. I'm in fire and rescue. Uh, do it for a career. I hate masks. We've got to wear them all the time. Um, but I will point here and say, we talked about studies and all that. You, I can take a study. I can take numbers. I can make it, point out to whatever I want it to point out. I can make it say whatever I want it to say. I've done it. I mean, uh, I worked here in the county as a part-time EM, um, when COVID first come out. Um, and watched what the school system done, how they managed the numbers, how they, uh, took action when something happened as far as a classroom, um, just like Dr. Grimsley said a while ago. As far as sending kids home or telling them not to report because the people were affected in the classroom. We watched all that. We know it worked until they come out and told us the mandates, that you've got to do this now and everything. Um, option B, I can go along with that, um, to an extent. Uh, the elementary school, as far as trying to say that the kids down there need to wear their mask all the time. I've got a kid that's in the elementary school. He's in the fifth grade. And I've got a son here in the high school, um, that goes here as well. I've got enough faith in this school system to know that if we sit here and tell them to monitor the metrics, they're going to monitor it. And they're going to get to that one percent, and they're going to know they need to act on it. And they're going to act, and they're going to act quick. They're not going to act in thirty days or anything. They've proven that. Um, so to sit here and say we're going to make mask mandate in, um, high, higher, high-volume areas or, um, mandatory for K through seven, I, I just do not agree with that. Um, and if you're going to do that, I think we need to back up and look because, um, not to point you two out, um, wearing a cloth mask, there are studies out there that says a cloth mask, everybody just talked about the, um, bacteria and everything for these young kids as far as the bacteria causing acne, causing, um, sores on their lips and everything. And like the mask you're wearing, Mr. Grove, i- if, if you read the studies, that, that's not a good mask to protect. It's open on the sides and everything. If you read it, they say N ninety-fives. That, that's the mask that they highly recommend is N ninety-five mask for this. Um, but, but we need to basically let, let the administrative monitor the numbers and come up with a system tonight to where, once we get that one percentile, yes, then I would agree. Yep, we, we, we need to step up our game. We'll put the mask on for the kids. But before we even get there, like, like we've heard, we're not Warren County, we're not Clark County, we're not Falkir County and all that. We're Rappahannock. That's what we hear all the time. We are Rappahannock. And I think our school system, Dr. Grimsley and administrative staff, then they can monitor the numbers. And we're not going to protect everyone. We're going to have those cases and everything. Yes, they're going to be here. But telling these kids that they got to wear a mask all the time and, and these hallways, these teachers got enough going on instead of standing in the hallway trying to be the mask police. And then what are you going to do about mask breaks? I've got a son at elementary school. He went for numerous days at school to where they just couldn't get him for the mask break. They couldn't get him outside to get the mask break. Because they're trying to meet so much schoolwork where they were on, um, virtual and coming back and everything. So I think if you go with option B, you should consider it monitoring the data, watching the data, and keeping it for K through seven. Um, all the time, I do not agree with that.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Hello, um, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, my name's Amanda, and I'm not comfortable being up here, but I felt like I had to speak. I support option C because I support freedom. I don't believe in taking parental rights away. I personally believe the masks are extremely dangerous. I think they're psychologically damaging, not being able to see faces. Um, I'm autistic. I have an autistic son, and I think that it's extremely damaging. I'm homeschooling currently because of the situation, and I really wanted to put my kids in school. But if masks are mandatory, I will not be able to put my kids in school because I have taught them that they have free will and free choice.
Yeah. Amanda, Amanda, can you tell us where you, where you live?
I, um, currently am in Amisville.
Amisville? You're in my district, Jackson District.
Last name, Asger nice.
What, what was your last name?
Veezy?
Veezy.
Veezy. Thank you very much, Amanda. Who'll be next? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Cory Voorhees. I'm from Huntley. I'm not sure exactly what district that is.
Get it closer to your mouth.
Oh, I'm from Huntley. My name's Cory Voorhees. What district is that? I would like to know.
Wakefield.
Wakefield.
Voorhees.
Voorhees.
Voorhees, yes. Um, I would support option C, no masks at all. Uh, the lady up there on the board was mentioning earlier, mental health. Let's talk about the mental health of the children. I got a six-year-old and a seven, and a nine-year-old, one's going into first grade, one's going into fourth. And the mental health of the children, you know, they come home, they get off the school bus and they're crying because they've had to go to school for seven, eight hours a day, wearing a mask with no opportunity to take it off. Just crying because they're saying it's so hard to breathe. I don't want to go back to school. And them knowing that they got to do that every day for the next five days of going to school, not being able to breathe, is having such a hard time with it. You know, I personally don't believe the masks work. I believe it's just like putting a chain link fence up, thinking that you're going to stop mosquitoes from getting in the yard. Uh, it, they serve no purpose. It's stupid. Um, excuse my, uh, analysis right here, but, uh, we're going through the worst pandemic, pandemic supposedly that America's ever gone through. And you, and they say that you can put a cloth mask on or a little paper mask on, and it's going to stop the virus from coming through. Well, your tighty-whities won't stop the smell of the fart coming through. What do you think is going to stop COVID from getting through the mask? Uh, it's just, it doesn't work. It doesn't make sense to me. I don't agree with the government or anything they're doing, and I personally do not see where it's going to stop at. You know, it's supposedly you're vaccinated and it's going to stop COVID, but boom, we have a new variant here. The vaccination is not working anyways. So please don't mask our children. I- i- it's been damaging to them and, and we don't need it again. I personally feel like, me as a parent, my rights have been taken away morally and a lot more in other ways. And I don't want to have to s- force my child to go to school doing something that I feel like isn't right. Taking my freedoms away from how I feel like I should be able to parent my own children. And the lady on the board was talking about, you know, we should be able to comply. We all should comply. Well, I'm tired of complying. I don't want somebody to force me to do something I don't want to do anymore. We complied the first time and boom, we were supposed to get over it in two weeks, and here we are over a year later, and we're getting ready to go back to the same thing again. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Alright, Ms. Gainer. Okay.
Sorry, I know her. David Veezy. I, I don't know. I guess I'm in the same district as my wife.
I hope so.
But, um, what I've been thinking about as everybody's been talking is, you know, growing up, my dad used to read Dr. Seuss to me before we go to bed, and there was a story called Sneetches on Beaches, right? And there was an outside influence that came into that community and caused a frenzy, right? There was people that needed stars and people that didn't need stars. And there was a machine that you went through and you paid money to get the star, and then you paid money to get the star taken off of you. And at the end, there was just so much confusion and there was strife that had arisen in this community that previously had been united, right? And it was an outside force that brought that. And so you can look at the outside force in this case as COVID, or you can look at the outside force in this case as, you know, authoritarianism or whatever it might be, but please don't underestimate the intelligence of the children that you're dealing with. They understand that you are not necessarily one hundred percent focused on respiratory hygiene. You are, there are people here that are focused on their political beliefs or their perceived political beliefs. Or whether they're a good person or not and all that things. It's very confusing to children, right? So the, those, the message at the end of that story was to be united, right? They had the picture of the two people holding hands, you know? One has a star, one doesn't. And so I don't know that I'm going to be able to put my kids in, into school in this community. They're currently homeschooled under a religious exemption. And it might just be the Plexiglas thing. I need to get some more details on that. Um, but please, I guess my message is please respect that you have very intelligent children that are looking to you for guidance. And they are not ignorant of the fact that you are focused on other things than their best interests. And so if you can try to focus as much as you can on their best interests and understand that they also are autonomous individuals just like you, you're probably going to have the best outcome. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Beth Gainer from Stonewall. Um, I just wanted to say from my point of view, I've got a ninth grader and I've got a senior. Um, and they both have been in Rappahannock Schools since preschool. And, um, if there is a mask mandate, I know for a fact that my husband will pull the kids. They will not be in our schools anymore. My senior has four credits left to graduate. I would like to get her done here, but that won't happen if there's a mask mandate. Um, and that's just the way it is. I like B where there is a little bit of come into it if we need to and drop back out. I don't like the high-density areas, uh, which I think Cassia was going to speak on, so I'll let her do that. But you've got to let the parents make decisions. You've got to let them know what is best for their own families. And if worse comes to worse and we have to have that come up and down again, I understand that, as long as it's temporary. But a mask mandate is a no-go for our family.
Essia, round two.
Cassia Gainer, the Stonewall District. And this time it's not from the student body perspective, but as a senior who attends the school and has been attending it for forever. And I am so happy to be able to finish it out and hopefully finish it out in a somewhat normal year. Like my mom said, I have four credits. I've been accepted to the college of my choice. I really hope to not be pulled out and be able to finish and go. Um, so with the fact that if we have a mask mandate, there's going to be other children that are pulled out as well. There's going to be a lot of learning that's lost. With that, also, when do the masks stop then? If we have a mask mandate for another year, when do we decide that we're done mask mandating? And, um, at our last meeting, there was, um, a elementary school teacher who pointed out that her students lost connection with her. Are we going to let another set of kindergarteners through third graders lose this connection with people? Are we going to let them fear people and be afraid that there's, there's these things that they can't do and not understand how communication works, how emotions work? You're damaging the next generation by mandating. Um, another point, yes, sick days happen and they suck, and I hope nobody gets COVID because that sucks. But people get sick because of the flu, and people get sick because of the cold, and people skip school. And they're going to skip school because they have to wear masks. That's going to happen. So sick days, I don't feel like should be the determiner in any of this because they happen regardless of we're in pandemic or not. Um, with that said, I am in support of option C, and I'm in support of option B. I think adapting to things is how humans have survived so long. So I'm, I am completely okay with this whole de-escalating and escalating when the metrics show it. Because that's, that's great, and that's saying we're adapting, and that's saying things are temporary and that we're learning, and that's good. The only thing that I would say is the high-volume areas. The bus makes complete sense. You're on there. I know that my bus ride used to be an hour and fifteen minutes or something. CDC says that close contact is fifteen minutes of exposure to a person within six feet or less. The hallway does not make sense. Because when I walk into the hallway from classes, I go to my locker and I go to my class. I have two to five minutes to get there. I'm not wasting time coughing on people. So having, having the mask for the two to five minutes that I'm in the hallway, the people behind me, they're not standing behind me. They're going to their classes. We're not in, we're not having contact for those fifteen minutes. If you're saying do it in those high-volume areas, then you're also saying do it in the cafeteria where you're sitting next to the person. You're saying do it in the gym class where kids are playing dodgeball and they're all together. We didn't do that last year. I don't think we need to do that. But the high volume in the hallway doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't seem logical. Though I do appreciate all the effort you put into this plan B.
Thanks.
I appreciate it.
That's a really good point, really good point.
And so I'm in support of plan B minus the high volume of the hallway. Um, and then in support of plan C. Think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, guessing. Really good point. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I'm Roy Ellis from Stonewall Hawthorne District, District. I'd like to try to put it in a different, in, in context. They're taking a political situation and trying to put it on the backs of our children, and that really gets to me. The, uh, where is this, uh, mandate coming from? The, uh, administration in Washington, made up of criminal crime families, aided and abetted by the Chinese Communist and global elitist, have taken this tactic as part of trying to win an election. That's what they did. They, they brought the virus right before the twenty, the, um, twenty twenty election, I guess, twenty, twenty sixteen election. And, uh, as a way to be able to put out mail-in ba- uh, mail-in ballots because they were saying people couldn't get to the polls because of, of the virus. That's the context of this thing. It hasn't, this has nothing to do with, um, the COVID virus. Look at what's going on. The CDC has said they, their test equipment cannot, um, discern between the flu and COVID after, what is it, two years down the road now? So that's the context in which you're making decisions. Shouldn't even be up here making decisions about the health of our children. That's for the parents to decide. When in history have, uh, has masking been mandated for healthcare reasons in this country? And, well, so we expect our elected officials to, uh, make decisions based on common sense, and we expect them to obey the Constitution. Because you're elected, you, you don't, you have some, uh, measure of autonomy with the state. You do not have to follow every directive the state tries to mandate, which is unconstitutional. I think we all understand that. That's basically what I'm getting at.
Thank you, Ms. Sales.
Jack Pullman, Wakefield. Uh, you talk about mental health. That's why I'm here and I, uh, believe me, I don't want to be up here speaking. But I'm here because of my youngest son. I got two kids at school. One of them's nine, the other seventeen. Seventeen-year-old, he couldn't care less about wearing a mask, but I see the fear in my nine-year-old. I used to have a kid that, you know, he was outgoing. He knew no strangers. He'd just go up and talk to everybody, just, you know, friends with everybody. After the whole COVID thing hit and the mask, he's, he's, he was like backwards, you know, he's, he wouldn't go up to kids. He didn't, you know, didn't even go up to talk to his kid, to his friends, hang out with his friends. Just totally changed him. And all summer long, from, from time school got out till now, we've been going out and he's kind of got back into himself. And then when he walked into the school yesterday, I could tell, you know, he was ba- back to the same thing. And then when the teacher, he asked the teacher, do we have to wear masks? And she said, no. It's, it clicked back. He was like he was this summer, where he was just, you know, talking to his friends and going, and happy again, you know? And I don't want that to go back to where he's scared and, 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 I mean, to me, that is worse than getting the COVID. Is his fear of the COVID. From what I've read, and there's so many studies out there that says one thing and another thing, and who, who knows? Whatever you believe. Uh, you know, most of, a lot of it's on politics, whatever. Who, who even cares about that? What I care about is my son and, and how he reacts to this and, and what happens with him. And, and I don't want him to be back to that point where he's drawled away from his friends and, and not wanting to talk to his friends and not wanting to hang out with his friends and back playing video games every day, all day long and, and, and all that. I want him to be, you know, associating with his friends and, and go up to strangers and talk to them. Uh, it doesn't sound right with kids, but you know what I mean? With, with kids his age or a little bit older than him.
Right.
And I don't want that back like it was, you know, two months ago. And, and that's the way it was. I mean, two months ago, he went out west and, and he was kind of this laid back where he wouldn't go up to kids and, and he used to be the one that And it used to be the one that went up to on the playground and played with every kid. Just had, wasn't like that. And now he's back like that, you know, we went to the fair the other night. He's up talking to kids, meeting kids. Now we go back to school. I don't want that to regress back to what he was two months ago. That's my point.
Thank you very much. All right, is there another? I appreciate, uh, yes, Chris.
I'm Chris Payne, Hampton District. So I'm not the most eloquent speaker in the world, so, uh, bear with me if my thoughts don't come out uh, very clearly. Um, but I have three small children in the elementary school. Pre-K kindergarten and third grade. Uh, my wife is also a teacher here at the high school. I'm a rap panic hillbilly, but educationally I'm a computer scientist and vocationally I'm a data scientist. A lot of people, you know, when we started first hearing about, uh, coronavirus, uh, it was going on halfway around the world, uh, you know, our first instinct is to be scared, scared of it. Scared of implications if it ever made its way over here. Uh, so to protect myself and my family, um, uh, I use the, the greatest weapon that I have and that's my mind and to, uh, to research and, uh, and, uh, figure out, you know, really what was going on. So, uh, I pull, I pull data all the time from VDH, CDC, Health and Human Services, um, looking at the data, very well informed, um, about the, uh, the trends, uh, going back to last year. I feel I'm well enough informed to make decisions for my family. In regards to, uh, masks and masks in school and, and everywhere else, you know, in our life. So regardless of what happens tonight, um, with this vote, uh, I reserve the right to, um, maintain my parental rights um, over my children in the school and, um, and, uh, you know, fortunate enough to have the ability to, uh, to, uh, to respond to, uh, whatever mandates come tonight.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Is there anybody else? All right, a lot of good points, a lot to think about and, uh, and respond to. Uh, so, uh, at this time I'll close, uh, time of public comment and we'll, uh, move on into our agenda. Uh, we're at, uh, action items. The first action item is the approval of the S R three application as was presented this by the superintendent this evening. It's a bottom line of one million one hundred thirty-one thousand ninety dollars and fifty-nine cents. Is there a motion to approve the application? Who have motion, Ms. Bonham? Is there a second? Second from Mr. Grove. Any discussion? I think we probably already discussed it. Anything else? On the favor, I.
I.
I oppose, no. And so ordered, I'd make that too. I think, uh, there's going to continue to be a need for conversation. However, we can do that after we make a motion and we can modify the motion after we make it. Is there any on the board that would like to make a motion this evening? I'll make one. Not, not even if there's anything, I'll make. Well, I'm gonna make a motion. And, uh, if the motion is seconded, there'll be discussion and then we can discuss modifying the motion. The motion I'm gonna make is that, uh, we modify our model to include, uh, escalation criteria and de-escalation criteria that would require masks uh, be implemented. I think the superintendent mentioned one percent. I'm not sure if that should be part of the motion, but that was our original conversation. So that would be my motion and, and at this point, uh, I'm going, since it's my motion, I got to make it, uh, uh, that would mean, uh, that there's masks on the bus only. So I left out the whole high volume mask thing because I want that to be a modification to it based on our conversation when we're done. Cause I think Cassie made some good points. So that's, uh, that's the motion that I'm gonna make, uh, is item B, uh, strictly the, uh, uh, change in our model uh, that we adopt, uh, so that we can react locally depending upon how the, how the, how the disease behaves. Uh, so that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from, uh, Ms. Meyer. Now, is there any discussion? I think I'll start. Cassie's got a really good point. This thing and how it's determined that it's passed has to do with a time duration within a, within a proximity of someone. So high volume areas would mean that it's high volume, sedentary, co-located scenarios. Now, I'm not sure where that happens because the classroom is distanced. If it was in an assembly like this, right, and, and we weren't able to separate ourselves, which we could, depending on how many people are in here, that would qualify, right? If we created, somebody tell me another scenario that you would consider a high volume situation. A classroom that doesn't meet the requirement of three feet or whatever the requirement is, right?
Like a PE class.
Well, PE is, they're active and they're about and they're all over and I don't, unless they're Yeah, but you're not, I mean, it's like, uh, so you're playing basketball.
For mask, a basketball player.
Yeah, you're not gonna mask somebody. No, no, so, so that's not a scenario. Help me out with a scenario that would, would it be a
An extended conversation that happens where you walk together with your, with your friends.
Right, but the CDC requirement, like, like, like she's fifteen minutes with the same people in the same space, so, so I think she's spot on. I don't think we're creating that environment. So that's why I left it out. I think it needed to be left out. So if you think it needed to be left in, you're gonna need to modify my motion.
I'd like to modify your motion to leave it in.
So we have a, so there's a motion to modify my motion to put this high volume transition space back in. Now, you'll watch this thing wind and unwind, so don't get nervous yet, okay? So there is currently a modification to the original motion that adds high volume mask wearing. Is there a second to that? The modification, sir?
I'm gonna second for discussion.
All right, we have a second from Mr. Grove. Now, is there any discussion about high volume area, specifically the modification? I think I already commented. I think Ms. Gaynor is correct and that it's irrelevant.
Having been in high school with a group of friends not that long ago, I spent a lot of time with a small group of kids going from class to class and would have conversation. I think that's how we operate as, as teenagers. I think if, I think we could hear each other wearing masks or not and we would have, if I would, if I had been a teenager at that time, I would have put my mask on, talked to my friend, walked to the locker. I would have been fine with that. I would have followed that rule.
It's a really good point. Does it last more than the CDC required?
We have a whole set of kids who are in all the classes together.
They are, but at any one time, they're not together. They're in transition and the class changes take how long? Truthfully, here, five minutes at the most, four minutes?
Yeah, two to four.
So five minutes at the most. So, so nothing in, happening in the hallway will meet a CDC criteria for that, right?
I, I think secondary is different than elementary.
Yeah, I was saying at the elementary, they go as a class group, don't they, usually from place to place?
All right, so the comment is at the elementary school, they go from place to place in a high volume cluster, right? Are they, are they in transition more than fifteen minutes?
I remember the CDC guidance did change to be cumulative over a twenty-four hour period.
Cumulative over twenty-four hour period.
Not just fifteen minutes together at one given time, zero. You have to recall that. And also another thing to consider as a practitioner on the ground is the enforceability and the, what we're putting on teachers to make sure we can maintain and know Johnny was behind you and you and you and the seating charts, which we do have to do for contact tracing. We do a lot of that, but
But we're not tracking them down the hallway.
Right, so getting that specific may present some, um, we're just, not that we couldn't come up with something, but
Well, it would be a nightmare to me.
Wear the mask in the whole hallway. It's for a short period of time and then when they get to the classroom, they take it off, right?
Yeah, it's like a few minutes.
That's what we originally talked about. Originally.
It, it would alleviate the, the concern of where, you know, the, the stress, the mental stress that we talked about of wearing a mask for a long time, for hours, for a long time. And it would, it would alleviate some of the mixing.
All right, ju- so just so we're clear, based upon, uh, what Dr. Grimsley just read to us, it's a cumulative within a twenty-four hour period requirement. So if Cassie's between two classes and she talks to the same girl five times, uh, for three minutes, boom, she's met the criteria. Right, I got you. All right. I doubt that would happen. Now.
That, that would be in the tracing data, correct?
Yes.
Right. Which I'm doubting is actually a real scenario, but, but for arguments purpose, that's the scenario we're talking about, right? All right, so is there any other discussion about the modification? Which was to add, uh, the hallway, uh, to our high volume scenario. Uh, so that any child in transition, any student in transition, uh, space in a hallway space would have to mask up. All right?
Staff too or just students? Yeah, I would say everybody.
Gotta be everybody.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, it's right there.
Gotta be everybody, all right.
Said it about adults reinforcing correctly.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. I'm gonna call for questions so that, and we're gonna do this roll call because I don't wanna guess. So, uh, this is strictly a motion, the motion to modify the motion about high volume space and masks, all right? So, um, if you're in favor, you're gonna say aye. If you're not in favor, you're gonna say no. Ms. Meyer, this is just the modification. Do you understand?
Are we talking high school and elementary or just elementary without the high school compliance on that?
I thought currently we were saying blanket.
It's a blanket thing currently unless, uh, I mean, obviously we can modify the modification. And, and unwind that. What are we doing? Is there any other discussion about breaking the schools apart and treating them differently in high volume space? Anybody? I guess not. So this will be, uh, a vote on, uh, blanket for the school. High volume space, right? That's what I'm hearing.
Say it again.
Right now, unless somebody makes a motion to, to, to say it only applies this, the, the modification that we'll vote on afterwards only applies to the elementary school. Somebody needs to make that motion.
I would make that.
All right, so the motion that Mr. Grove is making is that it only applies to the elementary in high volume space, which includes the hallway motion, right? So then we have a motion, Mr. Grove, on that. Do we have a second? Only the elementary modification. Okay, that's gonna fail. It's gonna fail. We don't have a second. If somebody, if, if you want, if you wanna support. Okay, so Ms. Meyer seconds a motion. Now, do you understand what we're doing? So what we're gonna do is say, do we agree with the modification for elementary school only?
Yeah, for high volume.
For high volume spaces. All right, are you ready? Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye, no.
No.
Aye.
No.
All right, so we have a no. We have a yes. No, no, yes, no. So the motion, the motion modification fails. So both schools are treated same in the motion that we're about to roll call, okay? Ms. Meyer.
For now, masking in high volume.
Areas in both schools is a modification to my original motion. In both schools. Yes, no?
Aye.
Yes.
No.
No?
No.
No, motion fails. So now we're back to my original motion.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's really late, so I just
It's okay, it's okay. What do you need to know?
A minute, um. Okay, so can we do that again?
Yes. What was your vote?
She said yes.
I voted yes for the modified.
And then no, no.
Okay, got it.
So we had a yes, no. Yes. No, no.
Okay.
Okay, so that modification failed. Now we're back to my original motion, which was in its original state, that will modify our plan to manage escalation. Do you still have that written down? The original one? That I said?
One percent.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so currently, the original motion does, I, I think we better make sure that we understand what we're about to say here. Is item B without the high volume caveat simply to say, we're gonna change our model, right? And here's how we're gonna change it. And if things need to be escalated, masks are gonna be mandatory. Right?
But our current posture is, we're staying with.
The current posture is still what we did a month ago, which is we strongly encourage families to wear their, uh, get their kids to wear their masks, but it's their choice. Okay. Roll call vote, here we go. Uh, this is on option B.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
I kind of abstain like.
Abstain? Aye, aye, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna modify our plan, all right? As far as implementing that thing, as soon as you're ready to implement that ca- that, that new part of our model, implement the new part of the model.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, is there anything else related to masking that we wanna discuss tonight before we leave this motion? Are we done? I think we're done. I think we're wore out.
I think we kicked it around.
All right, I appreciate the debate. It's American to debate.
I appreciate that so much.
It's the best of us. And it's, uh, good to disagree and be, uh, not disagreeable. So I appreciate that from, from everyone. All right, is there any new business this evening from the board?
I just wanted to mention one thing, um, we are, is, is, I'm also on the board of Rap Flow and we've been having some good developments, working together with Friends of the Rappahannock to get some free beautiful plantings in front of the elementary school.
Oh, great.
Um, and, um, we've talked with, um, with, you know, with Dr. Grimsley via email and also with Lisa Gates. And we, it's, it's exciting to have, it'll be, it'll look a lot more welcoming and there'll be native plantings there and it's an exciting thing. We've been working hard on it and, and I'm, um, I'm glad that it'll look, I think our schools deserve a little facelift in front and, and, and it's exciting that also that federal money is available from outside of our budget
Nice, nice.
For that purpose. Um, so I've been working hard on that and I, I just really am happy that the kids will have more beauty as they walk into school and the parents and the adults and any prospective students as well.
Ms. Bonham, is there any progress or have you been a part of any of the, is solar, is solar changed?
There's not been another meeting. Um, um, I, I do know that Dr. Bolt's posture was to look, um, at if there were other outside funds coming, perhaps through an infrastructure bill, which has been, there's a bipartisan agreement right now, which might affect, um, the way we might think about that, um, if, if, if it actually gets passed.
Right, thanks.
The federal government.
Thanks. Um, also, just so you're aware, uh, you know that in the months past, we created the, this task force which we called SIFT, which was, uh, I can't remember the name anymore, anyway, we call it SIFT. And it's got three sub-teams, Panther teams, uh, the first of which Gary Curry and I are uh, heading up with a lot of volunteers, uh, related to the LCI and studying the LCI, our local composite index. And what are these we can do to have an impact on that, uh, locally? Because in Rappahannock County, we are maxed out, which means we get the least amount of funding from the state as possible. Uh, because of, of the way, what uh, because, uh, of the way, what, what we look like, uh, from Richmond's perspective. So we're analyzing that and we've had two meetings so far and, and we haven't planned the third one yet, because it's time to, to come back to the original steering committee with our current findings and make sure we sync up. The second committee, Panther Team Two, was, uh, led by Ms. Grimsley, which was looking at alternatives. Do you want to speak to that at all or where you're currently at?
Um, sure. Panther Team Two is actually, um, yeah, that is the finance team, right? Panther Team Three is philanthropy, right?
Right.
Uh, so yes, that's my team, and, uh, Stacy Wa- is co-chairing that team as well, um, and we have some great members on, on the, uh, task force, finding some amazing, uh, research about school districts around us, um, the different LCIs, the different revenue streams based on their, uh, land use agreements and how that all feeds into their, uh, school formula. Interesting about our, uh, supplemental appropriation line and that we are the only district utilizing that code in Virginia.
In the state.
In the state, which gives us a little bit more leverage to maybe do additional things with that, since we're the only ones that know about it. So it's pretty great. Um, so, uh, really great, uh, things happening there. And then Panther Team Three is led by, uh, Gary Achill. Um, so he, that team's been doing some amazing work too around philanthropy, and now that everyone has had the conversation about the inequities in funding and the challenges that are really here, people understand it so much better when you're talking about it, and there's a renewed effort of philanthropy around supporting the schools in such a way that does not subsidize the county's responsibility, but also enhances, um, you know, everything we're trying to do here, um, and with our, uh, initiatives and creativity and just supporting the youth here. They deserve the very best, so, yeah, a lot of great discussion.
So the idea there was, is we create these Panther teams, they go off with a task, they come back with a report, and then at some point, when we find, have our findings, we come back and report to the public. We're not, we're not ready to report anything yet. But we're still trying to figure out, you know, what are the parameters? How, how do they affect each other and what are some creative ideas to, to move forward? So, uh, anyway, that's kind of where they're at in their life cycle, and the goal is to leave this SIFT umbrella team there and to spawn new Panther teams if we have a new thing that needs to be researched. So these are short-term, you know, high-impact, very focused, uh, efforts. So that's what that is, in case you hear it. Hopefully, we'll have a report before the end of the county year uh, to share with you. Is there anything else that's new tonight? Uh, the next regularly scheduled school board meeting is September fourteenth at six thirty, and it'll be here in this RCHS, and all I would say is, we're gonna plan on going to the band room, but if we expect there's uh, high volume, you never know, then we'll shift, so just expect that you're gonna walk up and down the hall, right? Hard to tell, it's hard to tell. Uh, so that's that. At this point, we're gonna move into a closed session. Uh, we're gonna go into closed session, go to a separate room. We're gonna be in there for, uh, fifteen minutes, and then we will come back in here, discuss the things or the, uh, any motion that would be required, uh, which we will make related to probably personnel, and, uh, and then adjourn. So if you care to wait, uh, we'll be back in fifteen minutes. If you don't care to wait, we understand completely, and have a great evening. Mr. Grove, you have a motion?
I do. Move the board convening to closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment positions, classified positions, coaching positions, resignations of classified positions, resignations of pro- professional positions, and a discussion of superintendent goals pursuant to Code, Virginia Code two point one dash three seven one one A one.
Thank you, Mr. Grove. You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bynum. All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, we're gonna go into closed session. We'll see you maybe, right? Have a great night. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, everybody.